To the point. Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. It's Thursday, December 5th, 2019. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge this is the title of the United States of America and to the Republic of North America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Born and up from.
Okay, did you follow any more minutes or reports?
No.
You guys got anything new on your agendas?
No.
Or your meetings, okay. Any commission comments?
Hope you better move.
Okay. Bids and con- no, that's bids and contracts, okay. Unfinished business. Nope. Okay, new business. 2020 ambulance purchasing. This won't take long, Donny.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
The, as you guys have previously indicated, look at getting three ambulances for next year in the proposed budget. Right now, we have four of the ambulances that's gonna roll 200,000 miles by the end of this year. So, we need to start the procurement process in getting those ambulances. Right now, you're looking at about six months, five to six months, in the time of order before they would be ready. And then it takes approximately four to six weeks to actually get them ready, stocked, all the radios, et cetera, put in. So, what we've done is we've liked, we brought forward, we'd like to request permission to move forward, knowing that we'll be encumbering this year for a couple of weeks until next year's budget, to purchase three of the Demir's ambulances. Each ambulance will be $192,370. Our crews currently are working out of the four Demirs that we have. They seem to be pretty satisfied with those. They've been doing well. We've had a minimal maintenance cost on anything, anything that we have had has been taken care of extremely quickly. The current fleet that we have that are not Demir's has been costing us, if you look at our budget this year, we've overrun on maintenance cost on them for engine-related things, stuff like that. And so, we're kinda hemorrhaging money on the maintenance of the older fleet. So, the sooner we can get units purchased and into the fleet, we believe that that'll lower our maintenance cost to the county. So, if you have any questions.
I don't have any questions. I'm good with moving forward.
Well, I would still like to put them out for bid. I mean, I know it takes more time, but I would like for OCS ambulance to have an opportunity to bid on these. I know, we've talked about this, but, you know, if you give them the requirements of what we need, and they say, "Well, we can't do it," or "This is how much it is," we've still given them an opportunity to bid. And when I went to Lynn and talked to them, I, you know, I-
The last thing that we had a discussion with them is is they're almost a year out from the time of purchase before that you can get delivery.
They couldn't meet a lot of the requirements that we had the last-
I believe it was five that they were unable to meet when we initially went out for quotes and provided the list of what we were looking for. I believe there were five items that they were unable to do.
Wasn't one of those the locks on the doors?
No, sir, they were able to do that.
Okay.
Well, we went through extensively when we bid it the first time, and looked at different ambulances. And I'm pretty much committed to working with Demir's. And if we get them ordered now, it helps us, actually it'll save us money, because next year, there'd be an increase in the price. This year, if we can get these ordered, basically, we don't pay for them until next year, anyway, but we'll get them ordered, get them coming. So, less time we wait, we'll get them coming. We've got a lot of ambulances already getting high mileage, so it's, you want the best and safest vehicles coming to save you.
One of the things we have been able to do between the cost differences from last year for those four ambulances was roughly $68,000 in savings to the taxpayers that we were able to do. We've been able to take that money and use it to get life-saving equipment. That better helps us provide care to the citizens. So, we believe that any opportunity that we have to be able to reduce the cost and take that money and use it elsewhere to improve the, our life-saving capabilities is an opportunity we need to continue to do.
Well, if I'm good, do we need to vote on it, or just okay it?
I believe you need to vote on it, sir.
Got it.
You have to send transfers, well?
Transfers, no, transfers. Just add them to the-
So, are you buying two or three?
Well, we had bought the two after the tornado using next year's money, right?
Correct. We had done that and gotten some of the money back from the insurance company. And I believe FEMA is currently, the last thing we heard was is they'll do a one-time replacement cost, since we didn't have a replacement on, on the insurance, as long as knowing in the future that if we don't change that insurance policy, that they won't do that again. I believe it's minus the, what we got from the insurance and the deductible.
We haven't gotten an okay on that, no?
Correct. There's no okay on that, but that's the last thing we had heard from them.
So, do we have the money?
What do you mean? You're gonna have to move from contingency.
The money would be in the budget next year. I mean, it's just spending it early, getting the things ordered so that we have them next year. Otherwise, it'd be 2021 before we'd have any.
But we did the two earlier, using next year's money, too. I'm just-
And the price in here is based on three, because they gave a value discount on that. If you go with two, then we'll have to change that up. I believe it goes, the price difference would be about $4,000.
About how much?
About $4,000.
I move that we approve the purchase of three Demir's ambulances.
Second.
Do a roll call.
Sam?
No.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. 2020 budget hearing, 8:30. Donnie Schulte.
Okay, thanks, Lynn.
Needs to get that taken care of.
Yeah, that's such the plan.
Prices have gone down? Prices have gone down?
I wish.
I got one for each of you, I think, or two different things. Did you all get the other copies that I handed, made up of the job descriptions? Did you all get those?
That was emailed.
I got one for you. There should be one. I gave five copies, four copies to Debbie. Those copies?
Here, I gave them.
You should have copies.
We should.
No, I gave them all the same thing, all one and I-
And they're on the file.
They just want a follow-up. Should have had one, should have had one that's sent. Oh, no, these are all, these are all different.
Oh, these are all different?
Yeah.
What are those mean?
Each person we have employed by you-
Oh, okay.
You didn't email us?
I don't got an email from you, but that wasn't always-
Look, that is, I wrote the ones that I was already got. I wrote the five copies that Debbie spent up, and I had one that's not sent.
You can go on the drive for Commissioner's Budget 2020.
Are they in there?
Department's request. Yeah. Christian, report that email. I would assume it hasn't changed.
You guys need me to send it?
Can you just pull it up?
I can't.
What page are we on for Donnie here?
What page are we, Kristen?
Uh, I mean, 67.
If you go F drive, then Commissioner's Budget.
Uh-huh.
Commission.
Commission.
Commissioner's Budget.
2020.
Yeah, I remember seeing that.
It says Department's Request.
Right.
Budget requested, Budget for Bailiff and Pretrial Service.
Yes.
I'm asking for about $6,5,197 pay increases for the marshals, but court marshals itself. The biggest increase is for the pre-release dives. When Chris had talked to me, all the marshals sounded great. Y'all sent it in $45,000, while they were hired in $40,000, and they are actual deputy marshals that you can hire for arrest. And I do use them in court from time to time, keep using my part-time leave, and I need some of the two hours. I pulled him up and he did the work, just they work in the court with us also. Also raised Richard's salary from $50,000 to $60,000. He's supervising employees, he's got 135 people out. I'll let you explain.
Well, I, I think this year has been fruits of the, of the tree for all of us. In 2013, when you all gave us the opportunity to create this program, we had no clue what the Supreme Court was gonna do this year with the, forcing the review of bonding and the things that's going on with that, with the Supreme Court and the courts. The beautiful thing was, for this county, we had all of that in place. Initially, we started doing what the Supreme Court ordered in July. We started it in April. Our judges were able, because we had already been practicing some of the principles that they had requested. So, the transition for us into this new Supreme Court ruling was simple, it was easy for us. Other counties are struggling, they're still struggling. And so, I think that that journey you all took with us in 2013, and, and creating this program, has paid dividends unforeseen in 2019. The other thing I think that has been a blessing for the county is, is the ability to, for the county, to sell prison beds to the feds. And I think if you look at an account over in the Sheriff's Department, there's probably an excess of $9 million, which some of that money correlates to the billed bed rates that the county sold to the federal system. I'm just saying that I believe that, that we can do better in what we're doing right now, pre-trial and court systems. And I think that the thing that I would like for you all to consider is using some of that saved money that is in those accounts to help us further what we're trying to do to limit costs and provide their service to the county and to the citizens. One of the big things, I think, that has come out the last two years is this committee, this Criminal Justice Committee that was kind of dwarfed out of a pre-trial committee that was put together by Judge George. And I know that Chris has been involved with us and kind of taken steps with us as we went along. And I see a lot of growth in this group. One of the big things that's coming out of this group is we're trying to partner with a organization that provides services to people that are at risk in the community. And they bring in and provide service and money for the county to help them provide services for people that have mental health, drug addiction, housing, all those type of issues that lead to crime. And a lot of the criminogenic things that I think we have addressed with this program has helped reduce a lot of, or some of the crime that's occurring in Gold County. And I think that the next step that we're looking at in this group of addressing is domestic violence and also mental health. And those two areas, I think, are leading contributors to jail costs. Just, I think if you talk with Sheriff Wheeler, he'll tell you that one of his major issues is mental health over there in that jail facility. And trying to get those people into different facilities, more at the state level, where they can get the services they need. Setting in a jail cell doesn't solve their problem. It doesn't address their mental health issues. We're just stockpiling those people at a significant cost to the county. And I think we need to get that cost out into the state to where the real resources are.
I think John had said that he was receiving money for our mental health, and now with our new facility they're building in Fulton, they're, they're not putting in a, an area for, for us to house those. So, I don't, you know, mental health is, yeah, I don't know what to do.
Mental health is so much more than just services that they get inside the jail.
Yeah.
It's services that people get outside in the community, it's, and then so many other things as we see in our pre-trial program, and, you know. So, there's all these groups that are there, and we had Bill Dent the other day talking a little bit about, you know, something else there, and, but it's these, these groups outside that help people before they get into all this trouble, or they, they keep them out of the jail, or they help them to rehabilitate so that they don't commit another crime, and they can stay employed. So, I mean, that's really what we're talking about.
So, how are those groups paid?
A lot of them are privately funded. There's grant funding that they get, that, you know, and we're working with the state, too, and probation and parole. So, you know, they, they have the same issues that we have, but you can't just keep locking people up because state prisons are downsizing. The county jails are all full, as we found out over at the Capitol one day. They're, they're full beyond capacity. And so, they have no idea what to do with all these people. And most of them house all their own prisoners, and their budgets are ridiculous. And they're, and they're going broke fast.
Well, hospitals, local hospitals can't take care of them either, so it's-
We've, we have been, we have basically gotten two guardianships. We've, we've kind of found a, a system now where we can help people get guardianships with the hospital. We're kind of partnering with them in their mental health to get the necessary information that's needed to do the guardianships to get these people out of jails and into a, a secured housing area. We just got a man that basically came in here, he was here for three weeks, and he had been traveling and homeless for years. And within about a, I would say probably 70 or 80 days, we got him a guardianship, and we got him in a residential facility in Sedalia. The charges were dismissed against him because we now had him in a secure environment where he could, could do what he needed to do and be taken care of. And the man couldn't have stood trial. This is the type of guy you would have in jail for months because there's no one out there for him. But because of the program and getting him services, we're able to get this individual out. So, what I'm asking basically, guys, is, is to, another part-time position, most of this on the back page has already been accomplished. Randy has been moved up to a full-time position. We did not increase budget salary. Mary Ann did receive an increase in her salary, and she is working hours. What I'm asking for is a new administrative assistant. And that individual, I think we have a target on that individual. He's the, he's, the individual is someone that can work not only with us, he can work with the marshals, and he can also work with the State Court, or with the administrat-
Julie's judge. Jesse had called, we got him on staff.
Oh, yeah.
He come in. I can also, we have two, we have murder trials starting every month, starting next month. Two murder trials next year, capital murder trials. On both those trials, Julie cannot do anything with the jury because she's related to the victim. So, we're gonna have to have somebody else come in and do all the jurors come in. I'd get him to do that because he's still working for Richard. Maybe if we could share the time. And that's another reason why I thought we were, salary went up from a minimal, I'll ever pull on the tire up to what he's paid now.
And right now, last week, we had 140 on the program, just to kind of keep you abreast. When we started last year, we were starting to, we were getting into the hundreds, now we're up to 140. And basically, we're doing it with the same staff. So, these guys, I can't, I can't tell you how much they do. They don't take lunches. They work every third weekend, they're on call, and they take up to 50 phone calls a day.
Those job descriptions are written up. We wrote those up, and we understand that's the type of people that you help working for, you deserve. That's the way we do it. We're all on our downside. I'd like to keep these guys another year, maybe into the year after that, start training, let new people take over, over asked. Because like you know, we're numbered in our ears, so. If you look at the quality of people that I have brought on board, brought, I have division directors, we have probation code people, we've got some test people.
Oh, Jesse's, Jesse's good.
You know, so, I'm just asking for a little help. I'd like to keep them all for another year, and maybe a little longer if we can.
So, do you say the salaries are already been increased? You've got those parts, so basically, right now?
They have not. They have not.
The two, the two deputy marshals we have, they're not deputy marshals, they're put in civilian employees and not you can say bars for arrest, they're deputy marshal positions.
So, they're currently both at $40,000, not $45,000?
Thirty-five, $35,000 here, you show up.
Okay, but the, I hate using names, but Randy's position is, has been already moved part-time to full-time?
Correct. We did that in July. It's just what raised up the, getting salaries of deputy marshal.
Are they on our insurance and retirement?
No.
Okay, yes, for that.
So, my biggest concern with their department is we've added almost $300,000 in expenses the last few years for the program, but there's no revenue coming into general fund to offset it. So, we keep adding costs, but we don't have a way to help offset that cost, so general funds is picking up that additional amount.
Yep.
And I think that the generated money from the, from the federal beds, I think is, is a direct response to what you all started with this program. I think it gave you a reach, a, a, a source of income that you would not have. And I think it relates to the, you know, to this program and what we've done. And those bids would not be available without this program. What do you all do with the taxes?
Those corrections, they're giving us so much a day, aren't they, for?
The way the billing goes for that is-
Well, I mean, they're-
No, they, they only pay. So, someone can sit in that jail for two years, and if they never get convicted and never serve one day at JCCC, we get zero.
Yeah, I know.
So, I mean, so they're, they're way behind in that, and so that's why all counties, or anybody that has a jail, is all mad about the reimbursements. Well, the state don't have the money. I mean, you can say whatever you want, but the reimbursements, in my opinion, will never be there. They're gonna limp along, there's no way they're ever gonna get caught up. And so, the reason that we started this program is because when we get people out of jail, it costs us five or six dollars a day to monitor them. Well, right now, we got 140 people out of the jail every day. That's over $2 million that it would cost us to house those people, whether we housed them or we put them elsewhere, which we did.
Would not be preferred every day, you'd be housed at $60,000 a place.
Yeah, we, we would hire, we would have them in Green County, we'd have them where, we'd have them wherever, and we did that. And so, you know, it's a-
There's our checkbook.
It's not to, it's not to say-
I thought though, Matt, last year, I thought they were saying they were gonna pay so much a day for the ones that are on-
They would like to, and, but I, I can tell you right now, Mr. Bushman, there, that money's not there, it's never gonna be there. This, this latest thing where they spent $5 million to, for some monitoring equipment, in my opinion, is ludicrous because they don't have anything in place to, to run it. And that's what these counties are running into. They don't have a program to release people to. And so, some of them are running them out of their jails, some of them are, are running them through the clerk's office, you know, having a clerk handling. And so, there's, it's, I mean, I think what, what we've provided to you is a, a systematic look at how to release somebody and releasing the right people. And I, I think if you would ask the sheriff, that most of the people in his jail right now are dangerous people. That most of the people that, that can be supervised in the community, we have and are supervising out in the community. And it's a constant effort, and, and I can tell you that the, the law enforcement community, in my view, is working together better now than it was when we started this seven years ago. I, I think there's, I'm talking to the police all the time, they're giving me information on my people, they're calling me about information. If we get information, we're sharing with them. I mean, I think there's a lot of, of brotherhood back in the law enforcement community that honestly, I thought was lacking when I first came back here. But that was just an outsider's view, and Donnie's been around it longer than I am, here at Woldley.
I mean, so when I came on the commission, you know, the sheriff's budget was in the red every year, and the projections were in the red. And so, yeah, we started this with a minimal amount of money, and yeah, it's grown. But the sheriff's budget's in the black, in the black big time. And so, you know, he's got the resources that he needs. So, all these things do have to work hand in hand. And we got the judges on board, we got all the people on board, meeting together, working together. And so, you know, you can't just look at, at the dollars. You know, obviously, we gotta figure out how to fund these things, but at the same time, we kick out the 40 or 50 federal prisoners that we got, and we lose that revenue, and we stick all these people back in the jail. And so, and, and more. So, if you got 50 federal, and you stick 50 of these people back, you still have, you know, another 90 to house elsewhere, and what's that gonna cost you? I mean, it'd be, it'd be three and a half million dollars in a, I mean, that's, that's what it costs you. You lose all your federal revenue, plus you'd have to house all these people, and so.
If you stop and look at it, we're asking basically for a part-time person, and we increase, we've almost tripled in two years, our inmates that were sent. And while we're asking for, we did, we did the shift in July where we put Randy on full-time. So, basically, all I'm asking to do is replace that administrative assistant. I'm not gonna have anybody to do the accounting portion of it that we did before. I'm basically gonna be doing that. I have to have people that are there that are doing reports in that court, in order to keep things moving. Randy, Richard, and Bush, they're doing other makers of reports, making contacts. Jesse, are you almost in court, do you, we're gonna come into court, take notes, and come back and tell us what's going on?
Are we gonna have a ceiling where this is the max we can handle on pre-trial release?
We've not done that yet. I'm, I'm not looking at a ceiling. What I'm looking at is if people are doing well in the program, transferring them out of the program, you know, as opposed to keeping them till the end. you know, as opposed to keeping them till the end. The biggest issue we have in pre-trial is, there's no public defenders to move the cases. And, as long as we have that issue, that's driving up the amount of time that I'm supervising those folks, which drives up failure rates. Because the longer you supervise them in this capacity, the more likely they are to fail. So, consequently, what I'm battling is making sure that if, if I have somebody that's doing well, that's progressing well, right now, we basically have one call in as opposed to coming in and seeing us every day. That's the way we're managing that. But, it may be a situation where we actually take them off the program, that they're doing well and doing what they're supposed to do.
We had ninety-seven cases yesterday, about eighty. And I would say, six to ten of those were still waiting on public defenders, they've been approved. Budget is six months late, before they get into court.
In Henry County, it's two years.
And we have another guy from Go-Kart trying to get in the job pass, Go-Kart now, and he's got a case in St. Charles, and he said, they got a year back on it. What do you think, Richard?
I mean, I think, I think the biggest point of our group, and I say ours just because I attend, but, uh, is that we're looking for solutions.
Right.
We're looking for other options to be able to keep people from being incarcerated or whatever. And so, you know, I mean, if the public defender thinks that, you know, we have the public defender, there are Justin's at our meetings and stuff too, so, you know, we just gotta find solutions. We can't just keep bitching about the same problems over and over. We gotta figure out a way to fix it, speed the process up, get them through the system, you know, get them out of our jail, or get them over to J triple C, and wherever they need to go, and, but, uh, I mean, I don't like to just complain about stuff, I like to find a way to fix it, and so...
And I can tell you right now, the prison population, I, I talked with Vince Ross yesterday, is twenty-six thousand. That's six thousand less than it was two years ago.
How many case managers do y'all have?
I'm sorry?
How many case managers do y'all have, Roger?
Well, it's, case managers, we have none. I, I think that was a title that may have been given to Randy and Butch and myself. I'm, I'm not sure, uh, all of us are doing the same thing.
I'm just looking at the grid that we went off last year, we got court martial one, two, case managers one, two, so I'm trying to get where we're at with that.
I thought we were all hired on as marshals. That's the badge we carried, that's our, that was our understanding.
I thought that once handling the pre-trial release, we're gonna be case managers, or...
That was the title we assigned them last year. We broke them out and made them their own grouping.
There's not one of us available sometimes in the end of dirty year, and they have to arrest them. All of us are in court or doing something, they have to do that. And I do use them in court from time to time.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, so they, they are marshals, yeah.
You made a good argument, but we don't have the budget for six marshals. We got budget for three marshals and three case managers, or whatever the number is, right? So...
So...
I'm just trying to figure out where we're at, and I see where you want to go, is you're wanting to move them to the court marshals or the forty-five number. So, and, if, it's just like in public works, if we don't have an operator, three physician, or operator, physician open, we can't just put people in positions that we don't have, so...
Why do you put them down as case managers? I was never asked about that part.
Since they were so new, we didn't really change their amounts, we changed their title to pull those pre-trial people out separately from the marshals.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, they're essentially court marshals anyway, but it's a different...
Grouping, yeah, they're working a different program.
It's just the same thing, they do, they can do the same job I do tomorrow.
So then, they should've been hired in at that?
Yes, sir. So, that's what I was saying.
Well, so...
I'm not understanding exactly.
When, when she, when we talked earlier, she told me that, that they were gonna start the budget at forty-five thousand for the marshals. And how do you...
Well, so, it all goes back though, when we moved Butch from part-time to full-time, your request was forty thousand. So, we moved him to forty thousand dollar salary. So, then, when we removed Randy from part-time to full-time, we couldn't go above Butch and take him to forty-five when we were, still had Butch at forty. So, we brought him in, in at forty as well.
Okay.
I think part of that was, we had...
I don't know that they had a title when they started, it was a new program.
I don't care if they're all court marshals, and you have court martial one, two, three, four, seven.
That's what's...
So, that's, but I'm just, I'm trying to stick with somewhat of a grid here.
I think what was represented to them, they were coming on as marshals. I had no clue about the pay scheme. When we set Butch's salary, that was set just based upon an amount, I had no clue as far as salary. If, if, let me tell you, and this is just my view of it, to pay these guys, they'll be making what lieutenants are over at the sheriff's department. I think they have that type of responsibility. But, I, I'm just saying, I, I, these guys are quality guys, they're educated guys, and they believe in the program, so they were willing to do whatever it took to make this work.
Yeah, I'm not questioning the quality of our employees at all. I'm just looking at trying to be consistent across the board, because we got everybody coming in here and saying, got a great employee, I should be paying them more. Yeah, pretty much across the county, we have that. I, I don't know if y'all listened to the budgets the last three days, but it's been, the theme is that I would rather take care of the people we have right now than hire more people. And, is the program gonna fail if we don't have this new administrative assistant?
Uh, well, no, I mean, it's not gonna fail.
Because I'd like to keep working with them, the means there, I'm not saying no to it right now, just, that's why I'm at with it, though, is leaning that way. And then, the salary, I mean, where did, where did that number come from? Because we don't have any assistants that make the equivalent of thirty-seven thousand dollars a year. So...
It wouldn't be thirty-seven.
Eighteen dollars an hour at full-time rate would be thirty-seven a year.
It won't be full-time, you'll only be part-time.
Well, I know it's only part-time, but I take eighteen dollars times, and just, um, we'll have a bunch of assistants that would be ticked off.
We were about twenty hours, no, no, twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. Yeah.
Because, the initial thought was, Jesse, because of his ability, could help in a lot of different areas. So, if, if Donnie needed him, you know, to do something, he could do it. If Julie needed him to help with something there, he could use it. I mean, he's the type of guy that can work in any portion of the courts. And so, that's the value of having somebody like him. I mean, you can hire a secretary for eleven dollars an hour, but that's what you got. With him, you got somebody I can send up to court and can send in court with a judge, and with a laptop, and say, okay, here's what's going on with this guy, we've interviewed him. You know, he's that type of guy. You don't find those guys walking around on the streets, I mean.
Everybody you've got in there is the highest quality to develop for you. I'm not trying to drag anybody else in, thank you, Lord.
But I can tell you, at the time that we set that salary, I had no clue that forty-five thousand was the minimum for a deputy marshal.
It wasn't.
Okay, so, well, that, I mean, you know...
When she told me forty-five, I never complained at all, that's fine with me, I had no problem. Usually, we'd come in, we either, now, I first ordered, we'd come in with a court order from Kinder, and that's just what you pay for every order. And, now, come in, we gotta talk it over, and she told us forty-five, I'd never complain, I thought that was a fine salary, start with that, you know. The only problem was, all these guys that I hired, I ended it, because I'd like to bring them up to all that one salary, you know.
I mean, it's obviously a great program, and it's saving us money, so, I mean, you know, we just got some tough decisions to make on, on how we're going forward, so...
The only thing I ask you to look at is...
It is a great program, I appreciate you all.
Is the, is the money that's been generated and that is in that fund, and I think that that's at your discretion on how you spend it. Because it was your all's decision to move forward with this program, and I think it was a wise decision. And I think as a result of that, you have generated over nine million dollars. And, and that's realized gain, and, and, and I think, you know, that that money could be used to keep going in this area, keep progressing in this area, because this is not gonna change, this is gonna continue. And I think the longer we stay at the front of it, I know a lot of places look at what we're doing here, and how we're doing it, in, in making plans on their programs and other, other areas.
Yeah, you should've been teaching that class last year, rather than, the people they had, you knew more about it, so...
I appreciate that.
Richard, do you wanna talk about the software as well?
Yeah, I, I can. Last year, we, um, when we started the program, Judge Beadham went over to, uh, the state courts, and was able to get them to help us develop a software, I'm gonna say a program, it's really an access program that they created. And we have been using that access program, um, for the past seven years. We have about twenty-four hundred entries into that program, and a whole bunch of information in there. There's a couple of problems with the program, one of them is they never finished it. And so, what initially was planned was, is that as we entered data into the system, that we could, from that data, enter, develop a report. That, that it would fill, and we could develop a report from that system. They never got it worked. So, basically, everything that we enter into that system, we have to come back and re-enter that same information into a report, which is, takes considerable amount of time to re-enter everything. We're basically working off about seven spreadsheets down there on our program, which we have to continually enter the same data in over and over again, which is a significant workload for us. So, last April, probably, we were down, the, the state program that we had crashed, uh, about two to three times a week, and we had a hell of a mess all the way up till about July. And they finally got it fixed, and we, we've not had, experienced as many, or as significant of problems since July, whenever they did whatever they did. So, because of that, I went out and started looking at a program for us to purchase, to where we could enter the data one time, and that data could be shared and create reports, to where we could manage our workload among, you know, doing these reports and also managing people in the system. So, I went to and then found this company that offers a, a, basically, a pre-trial program, and I got a quote from them for this pre-trial program. What that would do for us, it would reduce the amount of time it takes us to generate reports, which would reduce the workload on our people, and would make us be more effective and efficient. It would also create statistics. Right now, in order for me to create statistics for you all, I have to go into a spreadsheet, and basically, take the information off the spreadsheet, which is time consuming. So, what this is, is, is just a program that we were looking at to see if we could manage the information and the data better, and cut down on some of our workload.
So, Richard, which portion of this is an ongoing fee versus a one-time fee?
The twenty-one...
Two thirty-one.
Okay, the, um, the top fee is the, the nine thousand, one hundred and seventy. That is, uh, there's a continual fee of about, I think, two thousand dollars. They've reduced that each year. Plus, if we use the Amazon platform, there would be that six thousand dollar fee there that you see. If we do not use the Amazon format, it would be around two thousand dollars, would be that annual fee for that.
So, if you didn't use the Amazon, you would have to purchase a server or something to house it on, is that...
I've talked with Brian, we can put it on the server downstairs. Okay, there's not an issue with that. He and I have talked, we've had some communications with them. So, basically, that if you don't use the Amazon cloud, and we do it all in-house, it'll be that two thousand dollar renewing fee. The twenty-one thousand is the creative program.
Not just a one-time only, okay.
Okay. So, I had twenty-five hundred dollars in the capital for our software, because we weren't sure pricing until we got this.
They have reduced that amount, I can give you the new figures because of, of them. Let's see.
Sure.
I'll be causing some...
Sorry.
And I think, from talking with Brian, the biggest issue I've, I've got to resolve is with state courts. Right now, we use their, um, software to run our program. I, I have to see if they will allow this on their software. If they do not allow this on their software, then we would have to go off of their software package and use one, use accounts. It's, and Brian seems to think it's a doable thing. We would probably still maintain one computer on the state package, so if we had to go in and do things in that system, we could do that.
So, it seems like it would benefit the, the courts as well, with processing and managing the defendants.
Yes, sir.
Would they be willing to go in on it?
I haven't asked them, I can certainly, can ask them.
Have you talked to them about this program, I just, I don't know, just here with it all?
I've talked with Judge Joyce about the program, but I have not asked them if they would be willing to supply the funding.
Is it a total, I'm sorry, Jeff, is this a total of thirty thousand, is that what it's gonna cost, of front pay?
That's for the initial installation, yes.
So, I understand the importance of this program, like I was talking to Chris, and I think I was talking to Jeff too about this. It's a, it's a very symbiotic relationship that we have, that we all three, we need federal prisoners, we need pre-trial, and we need, and of course, we need a jail. And I'm willing to work with it, a, a one-time cost, I'm willing to, to supply some money for that, because I think that, that it, it would benefit them greatly. Uh, the problem I have is the operational cost that takes away from my operations, that's what it is. We, we do have a, a good budget, I am in the black, five hundred dollars, so, uh, we're, we're doing pretty good on our, on our budget. I'm gonna continue to do that. One-time payments, I have funds specifically for inmates that I can spend, and, and I would be happy to, to, to spend some money on this particular project if it benefits the PTX.
Can you check with the state and make sure this is...
Yeah, I, I really haven't gone forward with it, because I didn't know if, if you, you know, if it was something we could do. But, I have, you know, I've been talking with Brian, uh, and I've also looked at what I have to go through with the state. I have to, uh, submit a proposal to them, and then I have to go over, and they have a meeting, and, and they go over it. The likelihood of them allowing us to let this company have access to their program is probably not real high. So, I'm thinking more along the lines, we would probably have to go with our own server. My understanding is the actual hardware, the laptops that we own are our laptops. However, the state claims them because they have their program on it. So, they would take, I guess, their program off of our laptops, and then we would have to install a program, and use the county, uh, server to run basically our program off the county server.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm good with especially, and check with, see if the, the courts would pay for part of it too.
I would. I would.
But...
But it seems like it would help a lot. It's what I'm looking at. Just helps them manage and go through stuff and make sure everyone's treated the same and they have some kind of system in place and then it just, you know, makes this program more sustainable and effective.
Yeah.
Was this off of a state contract or a purchasing...
No. No, I think we would have to go through a, a bidding, I'm guessing, is probably what we would have to go through. This was just a company I found that actually had a pre-trial program. And pre-trial is so new across the country, there's just not a lot out there. And a lot of these programs, they don't write them until they see there's money out there and they want it at the state level. They want to come in and sell this to the state, you know, to provide it for all the people in the state. I, I've been trying to get the state courts to look at something like this or for them to create something like this and get ahead of the game because I do think there's going to be a lot more pre-trial programs, but I have not had much buy-in from the state, so.
Okay.
Well, they don't have to because we're going to.
That's right. That's exactly right.
And you know what? That's, that's what this is all about. That's why the inmates, they're coming back to the counties.
They're pushing the prisoners out to us and we're having to pay for it. The citizens of Polk County are having to pay for it.
Get that down, Jeff.
Make a note.
Yeah, yeah.
For the compass classification, is that something that you all use at the jail, John? And this program seems like it's got a little bit of everything.
Well, we use a program. The classification program we use through is Interpol. So whenever we come in, we, we go through all of the process. I'm sure it's similar. This is, it, it is not something that we would utilize in a, in a jail. But, I don't know if an interface would work in there to where you could pull the data. I don't know if someplace we could talk to Interpol about and see how much it would cost to...
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, that would be something that we could also look at because certainly the information you're entering.
Why redundant?
Yeah, it's, it's just redundant. It's same, you know, and that's what's killing us is, you know, I put a guy's name in, in seven different programs, you know? And so, and everything about him that goes in those programs, I have to redo each time. So, that's one of the big things I'm trying to get away from to help manage time, our time better, you know, on working on these cases. That's why, you know, I've been reluctant to ask for more staffing because we're trying to do things smarter and not increase staffing, but we've got to the point where we're growing so fast and the, the, the work is piling on us because of the deadlines. Basically, Judge Walker gives us seven days to get a report. Well, if you go in and interview fifteen people twice a week, you can imagine trying to get reports generated in seven days off, you know, twice a week doing fifteen people.
Why don't you two see if you can work?
Yeah.
Work it out. You got anything else? We're, we're twenty minutes behind the schedule.
Yeah, he's coming in next.
Sorry.
Well, you can do what you got to do in eight minutes, right?
All I have to do is...
No, I just wanted... So you get a copy of that.
Your little water has some gloves they want to go on.
And then you complain when it's hot in the summer. Man, I'll tell you, we can't please you.
Do you guys have any other questions for Richard before he leaves?
No, not right now. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate the opportunity.
Steve, you're up.
Okay, what page is Steve on?
Uh, Steve is page thirty-three.
I've been scared.
And can you guys make sure everybody's signed in? I'm not doing a very good job, Berlin.
I'm slow with the server.
Excuse me, sir.
Pardon me, sir.
Gun is poking me.
Oh, no. Are you ready?
We're ready.
So I was serious about the heat. We really need to do something about it. I don't know if there's something in the budget for it or not, but, you know, we don't have a thermostat in our office. It, it is very cold in there, so. I don't know what we're going to do if it's hot over here. And I can see why you guys want to turn the thermostat down here because it's really hot in here, but now it's, you know, it's seventy degrees in our office. We're sixty-nine degrees, so something has got to be done.
That's what I keep it at home.
But, well, why don't you give us the thermostat back? Just take it out of here and put it in our office.
No.
Okay, okay.
We're not in here, Berlin.
No, we're not, yeah.
So anyway, something's really got to be done with that, so. But, anyway, on the budget part of it, I guess, everything looks pretty good to me except I'm kind of worried about the election expense part. It looks like there's about sixty thou- sixty thousand dollar difference between what Kristen's asking and what I'm asking. We do have five elections. They did add one to us in February. There's a water district in Towson that's going to have an election in February. So we'll have to put some money in for that. Probably five or six thousand dollars.
I was still using that, but you did.
Just a pass or... We estimated, I think, five or six thousand dollars to do that election. And I don't know what to do with the other discrepancy. I, it's just hard to tell. You know, you don't know what's going to be on the ballot. You don't know how many races you're going to have. Don't know what Atkins is going to do. I'm sure their price is going to go up. You know, this April, we were shocked with the bill that we got that was ten thousand dollars higher than the last April, but, you know, anything can happen. So I don't know if you want to just let it ride and then ask for money later if we need it or put some in there now and not use it or exactly what to do, but.
So we do, um, this, um, spreadsheet here where we kind of go through and try to estimate, uh, how many different poll workers at different positions and what their costs are. And then we go down and we also try to estimate Atkins bills, uh, for each election. And that's how we came up with the numbers in, in our budget. And actually, we've kind of cushioned those as well, tried to not be too strict on what numbers we put in there,
So you've taken into consideration five, five elections?
Um, we did not know when we did the, that there will be a, what is it, March election?
February.
February election? Uh, we did not know that when we did the budget.
And that's not, that's...
So we will have to...
That's not countywide, though?
No, it's just public water supply for being Towson, Wardsville.
Okay.
So we will have to add some additional for that additional election because we have not estimated that in. And turn some revenue back.
They'll pay for the whole election. The pub- the public water supply is paid for. Just that we have to have money to pay our bills, so. I think we had told them probably five or six thousand dollars.
So her numbers otherwise look correct?
I think, I think they're pretty close.
All right. I'm going to flip, flip flop on you.
She uses, she uses our figures anyways. She's put them in a different format, so I, I think I probably was a little bit high.
So if you did two hundred and fifty thousand...
Yeah, I'm thinking...
For elections, that would pretty much cover...
We probably need to add six to both sides, so you would add six to election expense only and the election expense revenue as well for the February election.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, if you often live with that, then...
Yeah, we'll see how it plays out. Yeah, I don't, I don't see anything unforeseen unless Atkins, something there with them.
Okay.
It's pretty captive, you know? You pretty well have to go with them, so. Yeah, I'd stayed with him a lot of time then.
Yeah, you did good.
It's my prize. Do I get a prize? Is that it then? Is that, I mean, really, that's all I noticed.
Well, if Brian ever finds that dairy shot, we'll hang it over in your office.
There you go.
Yeah.
Hang it in the pantry. Maybe that'll warm us up.
Put some gloves in here.
Give them a shirt.
Yeah, put some gloves on. It happens. Thank you.
Are they warmed up a little bit?
It's hot in here, but it always comes in our home. It just doesn't. I asked Greg, like, we have an election room. It's just a small room in the back that has its own thermostat. I said, why can't we move that thermostat out in our office and duck those out? And he said, well, you'd have to budget the money for it. So talk to him if you don't mind. Maybe he can do that.
Well, we did talk about it a little bit yesterday because it was like a tennis match, watching people come in and out.
Yeah.
But some, somewhere, you know, within the next year or so, we're going to have to kind of figure out what we're doing with the courtroom and everything, so hate to do...
Those are on a separate one. Yeah, we might be able to do something like that and try to...
Duct it in.
EMS reimbursement.
Oh, yeah, in and out account.
Anything you can do to, to push Greg a little bit on my side.
EMS reimbursement account. So this is your copy.
Matthew.
And then this is where we need your signature.
Is it Matthew? Yeah, it is.
It'll run up, get touch in here. Is she in her office?
She should be up there.
They only have an hour for you, though. Does that mean enough?
I hope it's way less than that.
All righty. Here we go.
Do I need to sign it? You should be, okay.
Right, and same with this. This is, there's, these require only one signature for the eight years.
What a fool.
Okay.
Need your copy.
Thank you.
And I'll get you a new one of these, whatever.
That's the sales sheet, or whatever you want to start.
Right, I'll leave one with Kristen. I mean...
So, because you're kind of... Okay, so page one oh seven. You go ahead, Matt. You got changes or things that need to be changed?
So I have only a few areas of concern. I think otherwise the budget is pretty well done. Um, Kristen and I worked on it, um, you know, in her office, uh, to try to get as close as we could. The medical expenditures for medical supplies, a little concerned with that based on some of the things we had to do in the last two months in order to kind of keep that going. We had to move some, uh, funds out of contingency in order to keep that. So as our call volume increases, our expenditures in that realm will also continue to increase, so.
Do you have a number you're thinking?
Um, so I'm thinking that if we put another fifteen in there, um, I think that should be good on that. And so, that's the, that, that's the only place I think we probably need to go. And I think I originally requested, um, I think we were both at one eighty on that, but, um, since looking at it a little closer, I do think we need to go up a little bit on that. Good part is, is if we don't need it, that can always go back in because that's pretty much just a, it either is or isn't. And then the only, the other one that is, uh, public relations for, uh, community involvement and, uh, doing, uh, injury prevention education, part of the tenant of EMS is making sure that we have, uh, that involvement with the community, stop the bleed, things like that. Um, we are one of, I believe, three agencies in the state that offer post, uh, credit for training officers, corrections any police officer. Uh, they get actual continuing education. We've got certified to do that, uh, education for them. I know we've done things at the prison. I believe we have some, uh, other officers and, uh, agencies that are asking about coming and having us do that as well, so. Um, but we'd like to be doing that at the schools and things like that because I do believe that, uh, for an example, active shooter stop the bleed is really where that came from. A majority of those that are able to be saved, uh, in an active shooter, if they, if they do, uh, end up deceased, it's generally because they've extenuated or bled out. And so that's an important training that we'd like to start giving. We've done, I believe, one of the high schools or, uh, middle schools so far and we've been reaching out to do that, uh, training as well. So, things like that, be able to, you know, go out there in the community and be able to, you know, have those things. One of the things that we've kicked around is doing, uh, home safety inspections before newborns come home to check, to show, you know, hey, your outlets aren't covered or, hey, these are safety issues because we would rather prevent that injury versus being just a response agency strictly. If we can prevent that, that's better for the community. So, that's one of the things we've kicked around as well.
Where is that, public relations under, under training or...
There's, it's not in there at the moment. This would be a new line for them.
And what was the ask for that?
Um, so, didn't we initially have one in there and we pulled it? No?
It's never been in there before.
Oh, I thought...
I think you did ask. I think it was in your original.
Yeah, it was in my original. I think we asked for eight, but I could be wrong.
Eight thousand?
Yes, sir. Um, we did pull some money out of, uh, meetings and training aspect of things, um, and that was, uh, training was the one we pulled ten out of that. That we will be giving up a class in order to do that, um, but I'm, I think the classes that we have scheduled are planned with that twenty, it, it suffice, will suffice for that aspect. The only thing that we did want to discuss and it's more on what your thoughts are on is if we wanted to reimburse...
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen. Um, I think if we went to eight, we'd be okay on the public relations for this year. And then, uh, if we wanted to reimburse, uh, current employees for paramedic school, once they concluded and did a, offered a certificate, you know, had offered their license, then we would reimburse them for a commitment of service. So it would be, uh, you know, if we, you know, pay your seven thousand dollar paramedic school, you give us three years on a prorated basis. Um, we can't do a three or nothing. Uh, that basically becomes an indentured servant, basically, under the laws, my understanding. So we would have to prorate that out, um, but it's, my opinion is it's better to homegrown your, uh, paramedics. If you have good EMTs, generally they're committed to the organization and the mission that we do. And so if we're able to do that, that's great. If we can't, I understand. But I have had several employees ask, um, would the county be willing to reimburse them if they went to paramedic school? Um, currently the EMTs make approximately thirty-one thousand, so for them to, you know, put that seven thousand out there, it is a significant amount of their pay already. So, just something to consider. But otherwise, I think we're good, um, on, on that. I know in one of our requests for, uh, positions was that logistics officer, um, that we had and we shifted it to a training. Uh, we did find that to be a cost-saving, uh, aspect this year. Um, we had David doing that, um, before he got promoted. Um, we'd like to see that. On our initial request, uh, we also had an additional administrative assistant. We've pulled that out to try to stay within that budget process. Um, so if we can do the logistics, I think that, that would be a fair compromise, but other than that, I think we're pretty satisfied with what Kristen and I were able to come up with.
Moving back to logistics.
Yes, sir.
That one we had in last year's budget, right?
We did, um, and then...
So it's just an open position?
It's not. So we moved that over to the training. So we made that one the training because we had some training items that, uh, that we found were deficient. And so, um, that, that position is still much needed in training. Um, so we'd like to keep that and then add that logistics officer back in. The logistics officer takes care of the fleet maintenance. They take care of the station stuff. Um, there's a lot of times where, you know, um, other departments aren't able to support and so that individual ends up doing some maintenance, uh, work as well. They are in charge of the supplier and finding the best pricing. Um, anytime that we purchase anything, that individual is the, the first person that goes through that process. So, um, David was very successful and saved us a lot of money and we believe that that would be a, a way to continue to help keep those costs down.
Yeah, that was one problem I had when we moved David up was he was such, such a good job as logistics officer. I sound like...
He was, and there's just too much work to have him remain focused on that, so.
So my budget does include a logistics officer, so one added position. Something else we need to talk about is the salary scales that were originally adopted did not have a salary scale for his administrative staff. Um, we have included them with the same percentage as other employees, so they're not on a step schedule like the rest of them are at the moment. Matt did propose some schedules for them, but right now we just have them in there as a percentage.
And for that, I can pull it up. I didn't realize that. I'm sorry.
So you have the logistics officer in your budget?
Uh, yes, sir. That is in there.
Yes, yes, that was in there. So one added position.
You didn't have an admin assistant in there then?
No.
No.
He removed it before.
I removed it when we were talking. I, I removed that.
Okay.
Sixty-one five. Plus benefits, that's how it... They're up on the screen, Matt.
Oh, thanks.
Do you have that stuff somewhere?
I thought I sent that.
No. Do you have it out on the drive somewhere?
I do not, no.
I mean, like...
I thought he sent it to you all, did he not?
I thought I did, but if not, I may not have.
Yeah, I couldn't find any EMS department request stuff.
You couldn't find it? Probably needs to give you access to it, so you can get all the stuff out there, too. Because I don't get much of it since you talked.
Can you just put it out on the...
I can't, I don't have access to your F. I don't, I can't.
I don't think you ever go to Jeff.
Okay, hold on. Wrong, Jeff?
I talked to Joe.
Now you should have it.
Pull it back up.
So, he also proposed creating supervisor of training, is that what the title was? It's not in there as well, either. Supervisor of training.
Of the training for the...
Have a different title.
So your current training officer bumping her up?
So her current, so this is the nurse that we hired, one of the nurses we hired that's in charge of training, she's the chief of training. And so, right now, we have them listed equal, but she is technically a division head within the department. And so she would be third in line, and should something happen, or if David and I are available, she's the one that would take over the department in that process. So through the lines of succession, she would be third in that process. And so if you can scroll down just a little.
Is she the one that has the trauma and...
She's a flight nurse?
The flight...
No, so that's, she's, she's actually a field medic, the flight nurses. She, uh, she was the one that's currently in there, in that spot. She worked at Capital Region, she was actually a part-time paramedic for us, and was a full-time already in over at Camp Region, a BSN actually, and came over to, to do, you know, the training with us and the training chief position. So with that, we'd like to push her salary up, her added responsibilities and things like that. So what we did is we kept the battalion chief the same, the training officer would remain the same in line with the battalion chief. The chief of training would then be, so again, she'd be kind of that third person in the tier. And then creating a step for the deputy chief position as well. I'll tell you that, you know, it's David currently, the individual in there, and David is putting in a ton of hours like the rest of us, but, I mean, he's underpaid for what he's doing, in my opinion. So we'd like to, you know, appropriately compensate him. Generally, the way I've seen a lot of agencies is there's a ten thousand dollar gap between the different levels of positions, so that's what we've tried to do as much as possible to create that equity with the command staff. I did not request a raise last year nor this year, and more so to try to take care of, you know, those below me. And then if you scroll down.
That's the top of the scale, what do you want?
Is there, the rest of the scales are on there too, right?
They're at the top, but those are the ones that are already...
So the only other one was the admin assistant, we didn't have a scale for her, and so we felt that we needed to at least put a scale in for her as well.
I think that one's going to be hard because we have administrative assistants in other departments that are not getting this kind of jump in their pay at this kind of rate. I mean, you can argue that he has positions that are not in other departments, that administrative assistant position is in multiple departments.
I think I was arguing the same thing, that the marshal paid you up there, and you wanted to give it to there.
Right. Right. There are.
I know last year she didn't get a raise when the rest of the department did, and so she didn't get the raise that, because it was EMS wide, got the early, you know, when we adopted that. She was excluded from the raise last year because she was considered part of EMS, so she didn't get that percentage last year.
It was a flat dollar last year.
Or a flat dollar, she didn't get that added in to hers last year, and so we're trying to, to make up for that part of it because she was overlooked in that process. And so we would like to try to make that more equitable and at least, you know, retro...
So we just missed that then?
Huh?
Did we just miss that then?
Well, so...
If she wasn't in on the rest of the raises, then she...
It was more of the fact that we made those changes in October, and it was said EMS wouldn't have any changes January first, so...
But we didn't adjust hers at all, so she probably should have been qualified for the...
Probably should have gotten the COLA, yes, but it was, yes, not included.
Yeah, I mean, I understand how that happened.
She was there before I got there, it was like seven months or eight months.
I wouldn't necessarily disagree with that.
So she should have gotten the flat five twenty, that was given last year as a COLA.
That's, yeah, I would think so.
What, all the other administrative assistants?
So I, I understand keeping them, you know, throughout the county, you know, similar. I would just like to, if we can, either retro back to make that up for her, or moving forward, adjust that to, over time, make that back up to her. And I didn't, I didn't know that it had been overlooked either until a few months ago when she brought that up, so...
So I'm a little concerned at some of the jumps, like deputy chief, the jump between starting and step one is pretty significant. Right, I'm sorry, it's, it's the gray.
So I believe that's what he's making now, and so that was what the second, that sec, or the first step isn't even what we were at with when Steve was in that position. So we were trying to slowly make that more equitable of that separation, when I'm not here, or, you know, I mean, he fills in, you know, in my absence, or, and to be honest, even outside of my absence, I mean, he's doing a ton of work. That position is, you know, very much needed, so, you know, the, the two big ones are the trainings, you know, the chief of training and the deputy chief, I think are the two big ones that we would like to see, you know, adequately compensated for what their job entails and their qualifications that they bring as well.
Are all of these changes then?
No, so...
So the chief of training, the deputy chief, and the administrative assistant are new pay charts that he's proposing. The other ones are currently in place.
So do we have a good training?
No, there's not a battalion chief one either.
Officer, kind of, we were having trouble, we were having issues before, so...
I'm sorry, sir.
Our training's gotten better and...
So we're still trying to find that second training officer. We, we thought we had identified one, and then the pay had, wasn't enough for what, you know, they, we were going to pay them at that, at the sixty-one five. So we, that's been our challenge with that position, is the starting pay. So we've actually gone through and had three, we presented three offers, and all of them were rejected once we discussed pay. So that was an issue with the training officer, that second training officer, so we're having some difficulty finding that. With the gap going into too much detail, I think that we, a bad training officer can have some pretty big impacts on things, so we were trying to find that right person, you know, get that person. We don't want to make a mistake in that hire, I guess is the right way to put it. So, the answer to your question is, is our, our process is improving. Jessica, Jessie, who's in that spot, is doing a great job as the chief of training. She is overwhelmed with the amount of things that we're having to do. We've gone back and found that training records hadn't been kept adequately for four and five years, so she's, she's going in and trying to find all those things. Continuing education certificates had not been issued or appropriately documented. We found out that there were training things where they weren't meeting the state, they were performing the courses, but they weren't doing the, the pre-work that the state requires us to do in order to issue those training education, you know, continuing education things. All of that, we're having to retro, go back, see if we can find the information, put it together. We've actually been bringing in one of our part-time paramedics that recently was full-time, went part-time for family reasons. We brought her in occasionally to help Jessie try to keep her head above water in that process, so she's absolutely worth every penny that we're proposing on that, and what she brings to the table being a BSN, and, you know, when, if we start looking at that critical care aspect, she brings that aspect into that training piece as well. So, that one, you know, the, the two that are the most important, that I would fight for the hardest would be the chief of training and the deputy chief, at least somewhere in that scale, you know, we need to revise that a little bit or look at it, but I do feel like we need to adequately compensate them. You know, it, I understand the administrative assistant part of that, but I do, if we can't put her on a scale, then I think we do need to either retro back the fact that she didn't get that, or, you know, adjust it to where she's making a little bit more to, to make that up in the future, because I don't think we were equitable in that. The other aspect of that is, is the time it takes to train and to get these individuals off to speech, should one of them leave, it'll actually yearly cost us more in order to, you know, to do that, so we, we don't want them to leave either.
You guys have questions?
I don't know, I'm trying to follow on that chart to see where it is now, what the difference is between...
So right now, so Jesse...
Did you email that to us?
So Jesse...
I emailed you, yes.
So Jesse right now makes...
No, I got the chart.
Oh.
So right now, Jesse makes sixty-one five, as being in charge of that division. And then I believe the deputy chief is at seventy-six.
The chief of training is at sixty-one five?
Correct. And so she would be making the same as the person she's responsible to lead.
Right, so currently she would fall into...
The training.
The second column.
Right. So the gray column is where she's currently?
Okay, gotcha.
And her, so her, her subordinate would be making the same as what she was making.
Well, currently, right now, they would be the same title, so you would be creating a title of chief of training, right?
Well, so she has that title in, within the department, I mean, they are, one has to be responsible for the either, for the other, I mean, having two of equal, then I don't think that's probably the, the right way to go about that, because you have to have somebody that is ultimately responsible for that division within our department.
And I don't think they're exempt at the moment.
They are exempt at the moment, they've been exempt since I've been here.
No.
No, they're not.
They're already overtime.
They're not a salary, is there an hour rate?
Well, they've been exempt.
Maybe not working at the time, but they don't work for it.
Well, then we'll need to go back because they have been strictly an eight-hour, because we were told they were exempt, is what we had, so...
If we can have that job description reevaluated, if you want.
Okay. So if that's the case, then we need to, we need to go back and look at that scale, because right now, they have been only put in as exempt because we've been adjusting that they work, we try to adjust their hours as much as we can, but they are, we have not been putting overtime in for them, because when we initially proposed, we had them as exempt, so if that's not the case, then we need to go back and fix that.
You may be right.
They're listed in salary, when we do our pay, like, it's submitted as salary, so like, when it's in BSN, it says salary.
A lot of them is, yes.
Yes.
So there's three of them right now.
So the battalion chiefs are not salary, they were hourly, but the training and logistics would be salary.
I didn't think training was, I knew the other one was.
I'm thinking logistics.
Training is too, okay.
Yeah, I think those both should be, because they're listed under salary when you go to do the pay, like, in BSA, so...
Then, yes, they are.
Thank you. Okay, so they were salary, that's what I thought, but I, if, if not, we can fix that then.
You're wanting to take the current training officer that you have now and make her the chief of training?
Correct, so she's currently the one that's responsible for the training division, so when we are able to identify that second one, so that's, the idea is, is that she would be the third in succession, you know, should David and I have to go to a conference, she would run the department, or should we both, he and I have an issue, or one of us no longer here, and has that progression and movement within the department. What we found was, because there was no adequate oversight, we had some issues that we had to address earlier in the year, and so we wanted to make sure that that doesn't repeat itself.
So do you have any of this in your budget, Kristen or...
I, I do not, like I said, for...
You just have a percentage rate?
I have a percentage rates for anyone that's in the administrative.
For those two individuals, right? Because the...
For the deputy chief, for the training, for battalion chiefs, for...
Yes.
Battalion chiefs should have been in there, because they've always been on a step. The only people that should, that weren't on steps would be David and I.
And the admin assistant.
And the admin assistant, correct. Jessie would, Jessie already had a step scale, we're just trying to change the scale for her, so, right, she's making that sixty-one five now.
They didn't have a scale.
Who didn't have a scale?
Your training and logistics.
Training and logistics were under the same scale as battalion chiefs.
I don't think that was in there before.
So are the chief of training and training officer, logistics, are they going to be a step above battalion chief, or they come down and step over here in the same...
So the, the logistics and the training officer would be on the same battalion chiefs, because that's how we had it structured last year.
Where's the scale?
Chief of training would be, so she would basically be stepping out of that pay scale and into her own pay scale.
She'd be, she'd be third in line, so then she'd be, she would be over top of battalion chiefs and training officer.
Correct, correct.
Where's the logistics officer fit in that then?
The battalion chief, like, in that, in that, in that pay scale. So if you look on the, even on that scale, it says, if you look at the scale of logistics and training, it's the exact same scales of battalion chiefs, we just wanted to break them out, like, on title, but they're the exact same scales. And one of the issues are that, you know, because we have had them salaried, that they're not making...
Yes.
They don't have that overtime capability, so technically, we have paramedics that are making more than those individuals in those positions, because they have overtime opportunity, so... So, we're just, like I said, we're trying to balance that as best we can.
Kind of a choice they get to make, though.
I'm sorry?
Kind of a choice they get to make, though, if they want to have a forty-eight hour shift or four-part shift, have overtime and.
It is.
Make it, or do they want something more, I guess I'll call it stable, you know?
More of a one-dollar shift, sure.
So, you know, there's gotta be some trade-offs there, too.
We have, we may have done the, the training chief wrong. I think percentage instead of the steps.
I'm sorry?
I said, we may have done the training chief wrong, but we did a percentage instead of the step, I'm pretty sure.
It's like where it says assistant chief.
Right.
That was what their, their title was previously, but those are the battalion chief positions currently. So they, for whatever reason, they called them assistant chiefs, but they're, they run their shift as battalion chief for us. So, we can clean up that position titles there to make sure that they're adequately listed.
So we did percentages for the chief, deputy chief, battalion chief of training and the financial assistant. Because those were the four proposed pay scales that were not approved previously.
And if we need to not raise mine in order to facilitate one of the others, I'm okay with that.
Damn it.
Do you have a cellphone? Sorry, Sam, I have to go there.
Dave, is, was there anything else in your budget, or?
No.
Do we want to go to capital? Unless you guys want to make a decision on that hour weight?
Oh, I'm still thinking on it. Not really wanting to have another position.
If you go to page one oh four, I think that's where we've kind of landed with capital. There's the list.
You just like doing that, don't you?
I still wouldn't mind sometime putting in, like, scholarships for paramedics. Even if we did like two a year or something.
Show me where you're cutting it from.
I don't know.
I'm gonna donate it. The San Bushman Memorial Scholarship.
I will tell you, we worked really hard to cut down the budget to get to where we were, so.
I know, I know, I know. I think somewhere, somewhere down the road.
If you're adding. Yeah.
Because thing is, if you can keep them for three years, then, because it seems like paramedics, you know, it's.
There's a nationwide shortage.
Yeah, it's, it's. What is it, about a year's training?
So we would have a contract, so we, we've got that available, we do that now.
That's what we need to do with. Yeah.
They on track.
Yes, ma'am. Aye, aye, sir.
I think it was based on, I think what the sheriff does for his, and they just, she changed it to meet the needs of us.
Any questions on capital stuff? Page one oh four has the list.
So, so under the capital request on those three ambulances there, since they ended up costing one ninety-two, you can take, you know, that number of their drops, that's from what's listed there. So that's roughly thirty-eight thousand apiece that drops off of that.
Do you have any outfit to do to those once they get here, though?
Um, so we will have a little bit, but some of that will come out of our current ones that we're gonna deadline. So there'll be one that will need kind of the outfit, but I thought we'd put that in there. So we have for the dispatch radios for vehicles, there's one already in there for that.
Okay.
And I think the Sierra wireless, so we probably need to add a second one into the Sierra wireless there. Because that was just based on two, so we need to put another thirty-two hundred for that. But everything else, and then as far as putting in the stretcher mount, I believe that came out to fifteen hundred dollars this last year for each one, so that would be the only other thing per truck, so. Make sure that's not in there. Yeah, so that would be it, so it'd be fifteen hundred times three, I believe it is. That should be it. And so, under the turnout and bulletproof vest, on those items specifically, under like the bulletproof vest, that's only if we were to get an employee that didn't fit in some of the ones. Like, if somebody leaves, then we've gotta properly fit them because we just don't have that size, that's what that is in there for. We don't suspect that'll happen, but we did want to include that just in case. We did have the same thing for turnout gear, it looks like that was pulled.
So turnout gear is still encumbered from nineteen?
Because we have a few still remaining, so I think we're, that's right, because I think we're okay with that. So, I'm okay with that not being in there.
And anything that's still encumbered this year will go into next year, that we haven't paid, so that would be additional to this total.
Are you guys good with me changing the ambulance amount to one ninety-two apiece?
Yes. Well.
So I go to five seventy-six instead of six ninety?
And then the first watch, that was encumbered already, that's encumbered, but we should be paying that here. And we could probably issue a check next week if we wanted to, so it didn't roll over because they just approved that.
Well, there'd be a payment in twenty then as well, wouldn't it?
Um, that would be under maintenance and it's like two thousand dollars.
It moves to its operating budget once it goes to just an annual maintenance.
So that would technically come out if we paid it ahead of time or it rolls forward, but that wouldn't be something that, that's not new money, I guess is the way to put that. And same thing with the turnout gear, so that twenty-four thousand and that nineteen, so roughly twenty thousand and twenty-five thousand, those are encumbered from the current budget that would roll forward. So, so that fifty-five thousand roughly would come off that two ninety-seven that's sitting there for capital. Fifty-five of that is.
And you need to add thirty-two hundred back in for Sierra wireless, right?
Correct, sir.
And another forty-five hundred for striker mounts.
Correct.
Okay, why am I not seeing Sierra wireless?
Sierra wireless is the fourth one down.
Yeah, my list in here is different.
The third one down, I'm sorry. Oh, you just passed it.
Why do I not have anything in there?
Uh, it was there. Sierra, uh, that's the antenna.
It's gotta be.
Can you filter through, like, department requested, maybe that'll kind of move stuff out of the way?
Well, so my list doesn't match yours, doesn't match the list in here, why is that? Oh, because that striker payment's somewhere else.
So John, who won last night, you or the mayor?
I don't wanna talk about.
Did you take your phone through the, uh?
No, no, I did my watch.
Oh, I have it combined together.
You're gonna have to work on this a little harder next year.
The sirens and the Sierra wireless are all from together there.
I know, you were right up here yesterday, you talked about it a little bit, and, did you walk out of here without even a dime? No, I feel bad.
I gave him.
So, are you guys.
I'll get over it, but I mean, I feel bad.
Are you guys good with adding an additional Sierra wireless and then the fifteen hundred for the striker cot mounts?
And that would be times three on those. For the, the fifteen hundred times three.
Right.
So he was eliminating a few things, right?
Well, the ambulances are less than.
Right, we dropped the ambulance, so it'd be an additional seventy-seven hundred total.
But weren't we, were we gonna pay this first watch, first pass thing at twenty-four seven eighty-eight, or?
If you do, then you'd have to just reduce contingency then.
Well, the, I think that's already, it was in, wasn't already, that was encumbered in the capital already.
So that one's encumbered in there, so either way, you're either gonna pay it this year or you're gonna pay it this year.
The money's already still sitting there from this year because we had encumbered that like in April or something.
I'm good with adding the thirty-two hundred for the Sierra wireless and forty-five hundred for the cots.
Somebody else?
I'm fine.
Okay, so I'm gonna add that seventy-seven hundred.
So you got that response vehicle. Are we getting rid of something?
So, this one, so we can get rid of one of the, the old explorers, I think it is, the, or four folks, not focus.
I mean, we have, I don't know, three?
We have four.
Four.
The one is the one that we had discussed about giving over to Greg, I think is, was looking for one. So one of our things is, is we try to move equipment and stuff, we, we don't have a vehicle to move large items. So, you know, not necessarily supplies, but, you know, the big items that won't fit the back of a Tahoe.
You have a hollow stretcher or something.
Right, and the Tahoe, they're gonna have command boxes in them, so that's not space you can use anyway. So we don't have anything in, within the department to move big items. And so, that would ultimately be assigned to.
But we are eliminating one of them.
We would, we would pass that over to.
We're eliminating it.
From our.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Correct, from our department.
And the pickup, they can still use as a quick response because it'll be a supervisor.
Correct, so we.
Be a supervisor.
How much more stuff are you gonna need to outfit it with?
Um, so we have everything, so we already have that listed in there, so like the vehicle.
That's all in there with?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I think that the incident command, my hope is to get them lower than that. Her, I just, we gotta do build and design, we've had a hard time getting somebody to design it and then, but not be able to guarantee them that that's who we would go with. So nobody, they gotta do CAD drawings and all of that, so we've had a hard time trying to find somebody to do that without basically saying, you design it, we're going with you. And so we, we would probably bid that out with a build design aspect to try to get that going. But I'm hoping that that comes in less than that, but.
So does the truck need to be a quick response vehicle or can it be a truck?
It should be a quick response vehicle because we can duly use it.
I would, I would rather it be a quick response.
Because you're gonna have a paramedic in there, so if we put the equipment in there.
Maybe not the best drive assistant can go pick up your boxes of.
Should rise.
Whatever.
Yeah, I don't know if that's a good idea.
I mean, for whatever reason, it could be anybody.
So anyone could.
Even your logistics officer does not have to be a paramedic. It can be somebody that's good with organizational skills and good with vehicle maintenance.
So.
So it doesn't have to be a, and not even have to be paid that much. We could fit that position even in lower position, non-supervisory, and.
You could, but if I told them I needed to order X, Y, Z medication and they're negotiating medication, if they ordered the wrong concentration because they don't understand the drugs or something like that, I, I would be concerned of having somebody that's responsible, because once you order that, you can't return that stuff.
There's not a UPC code or something, I mean, that's very specific.
Uh, so there's nationwide shortage, so an example, Epi to one to ten thousand, you know, prefilled syringe is currently in a nationwide back order.
Dash one or dash two?
Uh, yeah, right. So, they're on a nationwide back order. If I said, hey, you need to find an alternative of how we're going to do that, that individual needs to understand that you would take Epi one to ten, or one to one thousand diluted out and then be able to create that, and, and they have to be able to understand those processes and what that entails. So I, I would be concerned, not that we couldn't, but that lack analogy.
I need a canvas now.
No, but it's like first lieutenant, you, you need, you need somebody who could do everything.
I would, not saying you can't, I would say I would be concerned if you did.
I understand. So that one will take into consideration your order and stuff.
Is there any other questions about the capital stuff? Or just?
We're not approving any of that, it's just the list, right?
Yeah, so, maybe come back in January and he can talk about which, which ones he wants to go with first and what bids we want to put out, just like our capital.
Yeah, I don't think I have any more questions on it.
We tried to keep it as low as we could on that, I mean, you guys made a good investment into the county this year, and so we've tried to keep that much lower.
Well, we addressed a lot of things that may have been insufficient last year, so.
Bringing us up into twenty-first century, man.
Any other questions for me?
Nope, I think that's it.
I appreciate your time.
Forty-five minutes.
We, uh, dispatch don't get any more.
Take it five or just nine.
Yeah.
I'll take that back. Ow. Okay, oh, so. Well, for, uh, let me, I'm gonna get ready, got a coffee.
John, if they would start stealing back from this, right? Just, just because.
Okay, I, that would be awesome, sir. Oh, yeah, 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 no problem. We may still be on here. There you are. Just thought I'd let you know. You wanna talk somewhere else?
No.
No?
I'll talk to you later.
Okay. Okay. Slime, damn truck.
Holly's coming down with the log, and I called Joe, and he's gonna be here by ten thirty. So I may have gotten Joe in here too early.
Okay, she brought this back over too, because she said she sent it to wherever they need this thing at to, but this is a new form, they wouldn't accept the old W nine P M. So, yeah, I need you to sign it, but then Karen said, on the last one, you just check the box exempt, but we don't have a code, do we? Where it's exempt?
Well, I don't know what you fill out right there.
Butts, 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 no, these are cute little packets, here. I mean, they really are good. That's why I brought them, because we didn't have as many kits.
I'm good.
Yeah, they're butts, butts Halloween pretzels, they're shaped like. No, here, here. See, it's a bat. They're, they're not bad.
They're not that good.
Oh.
Good morning, Sam.
Good morning.
How are you?
Somehow got lost in an ambulance.
I would keep asking how late.
I know you would, is cheers?
Not that bad, huh?
No. Or do you rather have a Tootsie Roll, I have Tootsie Rolls from Nike to Columbus.
I don't like the pretzels.
Did you turn Jeff's house?
Is there up here?
Yeah.
What?
He was gonna leave them in here for the day.
There's the good pretzels.
I like this.
Wow, there's good pretzels and bad pretzels?
Jeff had made some.
These have seasoning on them.
Oh, depends on what kind of seasoning you're on. Oh, I make it, my, my kids love it, it's a spicy garlic one, that has, that's, that's spicy. Apparently, the, the guys up in Columbia say it goes very good with beer.
A lot of that salty, spicy stuff.
Yeah, they, they really.
Yeah, ask my son, ask my twenty-one-year-old.
Yeah, we're still on, we're still on.
It's all right.
You can say how, how wonderful we are, and how you love us, and blah, blah. See, I shouldn't have eaten those.
They're addictive.
Yeah.
What did you say they were?
He did. He just fell there with a square.
I like those.
Well, just in case.
Anyway, they were going on about how you'd be dead, and how you did the past, and then, I'm just trying to.
We'll, we'll find someone to do it.
Okay, okay.
Um, is there any chance of?
I'm good with that. Are you ready to go right after her?
I am, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
We're gonna move things around a little.
Okay. Whatever you say.
I don't think ours will take too terribly long.
Okay.
As long as Sam comes, mine won't take long either.
Don't you think you need to put a, a red, high-performance vehicle in your fleet, so that if there's something, you, you need to get there quickly, like a red Corvette?
I was gonna say the Batmobile, but all that.
I, well, I'm just, I'm, there's so many uses.
I would just take it like a.
We can see, we can see if we could do a sweet deal, huh?
Yeah. Well, they're allocated fifteen, I think, for this, for twenty twenty, I think they've got thirteen of them sold. So we have, we have to operate pretty quickly, but.
So you said you're gonna eat some of those?
One of my, uh.
I didn't eat breakfast, and now I'm just hungry. Could make me hang more.
His family owns the Laura dealership up in St. Louis, and I guess they, all their are already accounted for.
Yeah, yeah. Well, see, if we, if we, if we can put that in your budget, then.
One of these nights, I'll get you that recipe. All right, thank you.
Jeff, we need the recipe.
Oh, I took a picture of the stuff, so I could give that to you all.
Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome. I'm similar to them.
They wouldn't share with me, I.
And what was the brand of pretzel again?
Hold on.
Those are the one people make those, the roll.
Snyder's.
The Rolos?
Oh, those are good.
Snyder's Snaps Pretzels, and then it's good seasoned, zesty Italian dressing.
That's it, and oil?
And half cup oil, and then I use other seasonings and experiment with different things too, and a pound of salt.
A pound of salt.
Yeah, I do, literally, there's, I get the big giant salt on it, it's awesome.
Can you just sit next to me, because I won't remember.
I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Holly is on page sixty-nine. So you go ahead, Holly, if you've got changes you wanna make, or?
Where do you wanna start at?
Whatever you don't.
Whatever.
You might need the materials and supplies, the easy stuff, or?
Okay, sure.
Looking at my differences with, uh, between mine and Kristen's, communication should be fine, uh, the service equipment should, that one should be fine. The meeting travels fine, the mileage, um, that Kristen has might be a little bit low. But I have accomplished, uh, in Callaway County, that I will not be going to Callaway County as much, uh, I've really cut my, the providing conditioner has worked with me, and I'm gonna cut, I'll cut three to four trips down from up over there, so.
So right now, your mileage is only at twenty-six hundred, since we cut down an attorney, it's really dropped, because we're only really paying yours.
Okay, so I'd like to stay in that, okay, I was about to, your project might be, oh, that's my actual.
Tell Mr. Youngerman thank you.
Yeah. He has a county vehicle, you know.
He has multiple county vehicles.
I know, that he drives.
But it's, so I asked him about that, it's for everybody, for planning and.
Plus, that's where a red Corvette would, it could.
Well, you could go take, uh, Greg's truck.
I broke down once on the way to Callaway County, had to be rescued by a staff member, my alternator went out halfway.
Okay, okay, we'll keep going, we'll keep going.
Pair the helmet and overall.
Scooter.
There you go.
I'm thinking, I'm looking down the rest of things, all under fat and inter materials and supplies, that should be okay. Um, Rich, I know contractual services, I, I mainly use Rich, so you guys don't have to pay county, uh, time, I use Rich for most stuff. Which isn't that much, usually we can figure out our problems ourselves. When we go under, um, for the personnel services, um, we experimented this year, uh, that, uh, we did, I interviewed to replace Amanda Lander, but, um, for the salary, what the salary that I had, and the people that were contributing for it, I decided just to try to see if I could do it myself. And it's worked out, um, especially since Callaway's working with me to keep my court dates down, I've given my staff, um, some more like paralegal type work, and, um, we've been, we've gone ten months now, we've been able to keep up. I know we, we talked last year about the, the indirect cost that the county, um, gets above whatever their total cost that, um, my office expends out in a year. That had been going down, because I was having to dip into it to pay for that additional attorney. Amanda's last salary, um, with all the benefits and the health insurance, and paying some, um, plus the increase in the retirement, um, cost there, her position, all the fringes on, it's like seventy thousand a year. So, and I haven't gotten any increases in the state budget in a long time, but they haven't cut me, and I got my new budget for this year, and they still haven't cut me, and, um, and I talked with them, and they don't see anything in the near future, any reason to cut what my budget is, and I'm not spending the whole budget, so I should, next year, be able to, and I did this year, get all the indirect costs, and I haven't done no members reimbursement yet, and obviously not December yet, but I'm estimating that, um, the profit above what, um, our expenses are, is about, should be between twenty-five and twenty-six thousand. And I'm willing to go ahead and, and not replace, um, that person, um, but, and taking on the additional work, um, I believe that I should receive more benefit for doing that. I know we talked about it last year, but we put off doing it, and I talked with, uh, Mr. Thompson about it, and I believe, um, and speak for himself.
Well, I mean, obviously, you know, Holly has taken on more work, um, and with the calculation that we made, I, I, I see no issue if the commission would like to give her a raise.
And I'm willing to just take on that extra work, and, and I would like, um, to put out there that I believe my staff deserves also a little bit more, because I have given them additional duties. They're very well qualified, they do paralegal type work, and they do, um, intense supervision with defendants, working as like probation officers, because we do not have, uh, probation officers supervising all of our defendants on the non-support caseload. Um, it's kind of specialized work, probation and parole just doesn't have the time to do it, um, so we do not use their services at all on our caseload, and so they supervise on that. And also, in, I've been, you guys know, I've been around here a long time, I've gone to a lot of prosecutors, and seen a lot of assistant prosecutors come and go, and a lot of new assistant prosecutors come and go, Amanda's one of our new ones. But all the years, and it used to be years ago, the county made, we used to have a thing where they, they made sixty thousand, forty, sixty, on what my office did years ago, that's before your guys' time. But, um, with that twenty-five thousand, I'm putting out there, and I talked briefly with Locke about that, that I would like to propose to the commission to use, instead of that money just going straight to general revenue for general revenue purposes, I would like to see that money go towards either salaries or bonuses for, especially the young assistant prosecutors in our office, because they're having such a hard time retaining them. I've seen so many of them come and go, um, I know personally that Amanda, who worked for me, almost went to the A G's office, I know, is she would have lived on the other side of town where she's living at now, that Boone County wanted her for a child support position, because I was approached to, I said, no, I'm not doing it, well, would, you know, you know anybody else that wanted to, and they would have, but, you know, she doesn't wanna, didn't wanna commute because of she, where she lives at, but if she lived on, up in the Ashland area, would have been, because of what they, they pay more, and losing, you know, A G's office, and we've just seen so many of them come and go, that, that's what I would like to see done with that money, to maybe retain, because the cases, I mean, it used to be, back in my old days, we would have a couple murders a year, a series of felonies a year, but the amount that they're seeing now, I mean, to have prosecutors that don't have, you know, that much experience handling those cases fresh out of law school, and if you want to get the, um, assistants who are in the top part of their class, the top quarter or third, you're not gonna get those with the kind of salaries that these. And to re, and once they invest all the time in training them, that's when somebody else steals them away. And that's what I would like to see, and I'm sure Mr. Thompson's in agreement with me, trying to retain some of the staff that he's put the effort into training this year. Thoughts?
So just a little background, so currently, my proposed does include that additional attorney, so that is still in there, it was not eliminated yet, um.
And that leaves with, with no indirect cost, I mean, basically, you're not gonna be getting indirect costs anymore, you, you know, I could use, you know, I mean, a part-time person, I'm not gonna say I couldn't use a part-time person, but, um, if you pay somebody, you know, like myself, or somebody that has some experience, they can do the job, because, because of, if you work it right and manage how you do the courts, and is just getting along well with, with all the different judges, and I worked for a year with, uh, Kevin Crane and Sue Crane, two of the judges over there in Callaway County, and now my felony cases, instead of going in front of fourth circuit judges four times a month, they're gonna transfer them into Sue Crane, um, who's gonna supervise them, and she has given me a designated docket times, that is only my caseload, and I'm not sitting there waiting for all the other cases, in Cole County, we didn't do designated child support docket days, where I'm not, I go in and do all my stuff, and one fell swoop, and then I'm not appearing in front of the other judges too much, and that works as long, you know, you've, you've got to belong to judges and not get cross with any of them, but.
So in the past, if you look back at like nineteenth budget, everything Holly brought in got paid out, so it was a balanced budget, everything she spent got reimbursed. Going forward, if she would eliminate that attorney position, she now has some room to where she can get indirect costs back. she now has some room to where she can get indirect costs back on that grant because she's not spending every dollar they're assigning to her. So she can claim the indirect costs based on our cost allocation.
And it's ten percent of whatever I spend that month. Like, this year, like, what they've given me in my budget, I'm not gonna spend quite all of it. So that money, I'm honestly, I'm gonna get it. But then the state will give it to another prosecutor's office. Because not all prosecutor's offices get indirect costs, only ones that were set up early and got it approved early on, have that in their budgets. And so some prosecutors run out of money. So that can be used, you know, to help fellow prosecutors. But I will get reimbursed a hundred percent this year. And get a hundred percent reimbursement cost, ten percent of what I total, I spend for the year.
So she brings in excess dollars?
Yeah, I bring in the excess dollar. And next year, I will bring in ten percent more. If I don't hire another attorney, if we don't hire another attorney and continue to do things, I will bring in the twenty-five thou, twenty-five or more. And I didn't spend a lot this year, so twenty-five, twenty-six, it may be more next, next year. It's like, you know, what, you know, I got computers last year. But if I have, if I have more expenses in the...
So do we have a proposed amount of increase for Holly, or...
I had not come up with a proposed amount.
Okay.
Certainly, obviously, like I said, she is doing more work, and I think a raise is certainly appropriate.
Okay.
What position are we not filling, is it legal assistant or...
It's an attorney.
PA?
On PA.
A, 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 it's a position. Which, when, when I had it filled, I went back to what it cost me last year for Ms. Lander's spot. And it was, it was right, a few hundred shy of seventy thousand, what it cost with her sal. She was making two fifty-three maybe, so basically, the beginning salary, you know, at the time, position.
Get us something that is kind of what you think her additional duties are worth, so...
Yeah, I'd be happy to sit down with Holly, and we can draft something out for you guys in that regard. I can have that to you by next week's meeting.
So are you gonna take some of that?
That, no, the indirect, the indirect cost, I mean, that won't be for any, for my salary. My salary will be a hundred percent reimbursed. What I'm proposing with the indirect cost is using it for trying to keep assistant prosecutors in the main office.
The salary's like, what, fifty thousand?
Nice.
The starting salary is for...
Uh, it was fifty-one.
Fifty-one, so with the fringe...
I'm just gonna use around number fifty, so obviously, you're not gonna propose a fifty thousand dollar raise for her.
No, no, no.
Trying to divvy that up on the other APA, since they're gonna be doing more work.
That money is, it only is spent for child support.
Right.
Well, you, under one sixty-eight, there's, I got, well, four of y'all, not counting the one that's still open, right?
All right, so there's four employees.
So are you looking at...
Right, but only two.
He's asking, are you going to divvy up a portion of that to the other employees in that department?
No, you, you can't, because the only money that I get from the state has to be spent on child support.
Right.
Program.
Your other employees that work with you?
Oh, my other employees, yes, we all can talk to.
I mean, you're talking about trying to retain some of your attorneys.
Yeah, if I lose the three that I have now, I would, it, it, I'll always spend a lot more time in here than what I want to spend in here. Because especially Nikki Hartley, is she, and I don't think I'm gonna lose her. My, the three staff, they get along great, they work great together, the judges respect them. They can, if I'm not around, I can tell them to do something, and the judges know with my authority that they'll take, do what they, they need to be done on cases when somebody's... For instance, I was in Utah, and I was getting texts to take care of, they had somebody that was in jail having medical issues, it wasn't in our county, but to get them out so the county did not have to pay for those medical costs. And getting that, that done for me. Like, Nikki's very, was running Excel reports for me for stuff that Judge Crane needed. She does their own DNA testing, that I'm just trained to do that, so we can get them done faster. Sometimes she even goes over in the jail and collects them in the jails, and get, get things done in the short timelines they need us to do paternities on the, yeah. But as for the, the profit that, above the child support, that's making, my suggestion is, is hopefully to retain some of the prosecutors that Locke has brought in when they're being tempted to go to other places. They've got student loans they've gotta pay, so. And if you can retain them, I, you know, seems like every time, the amount of serious felonies we see coming in anymore is just...
I'd say just have Locke get his proposal together for that then, and...
Yeah, yeah, I can address a little bit of that, if you're...
Yeah, I'm, I'm done. If you're ready, he's ready to go.
Yeah.
Thanks, Holly.
So Locke is on page seventy-six.
And I think, overall, in this regard, everything looks pretty good to me. I know I talked to Kristen about it earlier, and I think on the two thousand twenty, sorry, Budget Officer. Kristen, if I recall right, you said that that kind of contemplated a three percent raise for employees.
Yes.
Which I think is great. I think they'll all very much appreciate that. I know it's been a while since some of them have even gotten any real raise at all. There are one or two, and maybe just a few employees I would like to specifically kind of address as to why I think they might deserve a little bit more than that three percent raise. Because that would be kind of getting into some personnel stuff, if we wouldn't mind doing that in a closed session, maybe next week. If we could take it up then, if that's appropriate, but...
You got another phone going on, or what?
Huh?
Keep hearing something.
Oh. Oh, there's some conversation outside, sorry.
Brian, go somewhere else.
So, anyway.
Close the door.
If we could, maybe just bring up on those specific individuals, next week.
It doesn't mean it's closed session necessarily, it just means the door's closed, I can come in at any time.
Sorry, Locke.
Yeah, I know, right. No, you're, you guys are good. So as, as far as those few employees that I would like to discuss specifically, maybe we could bring that up next week during closed session. I know that next week, we've also got some conversation on the VOKA grant that we go for every year. And I've also brought Miranda Lesch with me to discuss the potential VAWA grant. We're, we're hoping to get federal, some federal grant money.
When do you know that?
We, we don't know. They, they never really tell you when it's, when you're gonna find out until, until you find out. So I checked this morning, it is still under review. I will tell you, the last time I applied for this grant in different county, which was two years ago, we did not find out if we were approved or denied until January, which causes quite a, quite an issue because the grant covers January. But as of right now, we do not know, it's still under review.
Okay, thanks. And, and I guess we could go into some more depth on that, well, today and then next week. I'll just finish up kind of with what I've, I've got here. So just a couple other things of note that may pertain to, to budget. I know Angie's gonna be coming back full-time.
So, just to clarify, that is included in my budget.
Right.
Locke wanted to take her from part-time to full-time. He's currently paying her part-time salary, he's agreed to pay her full-time salary. So it would be an MOU if you guys are in agreement with that, but that is included in my budget.
Yes. And a couple other things that relate to some things we're trying to do to become not, a little more self-sufficient and generate some more revenue. We've, we've made the decision to start taking on some of the DOR tax cases. Previously, those were not being prosecuted by this office. Mr. Fox, who was previously the first assistant in Audrain County, recommended that we start taking these cases on. He stated that in Audrain County, that revenue brought in about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars per year to the prosecutor's office, as well as to the county general revenue. I believe it's ten cents of every dollar goes, ten cents goes to the prosecutor's office, and then ten cents goes to the county itself. So, you know, just based on, obviously, the population difference and, and the fact that DOR is housed here, he said, "We could probably expect maybe three to four times that amount to be generated here in Cole County," which would again allow me to be a little more, my office to be a little more self-sufficient in funding some things. And obviously, would generate some additional revenue for the county, maybe enough to buy Sam his red Corvette.
Whoa. Whoa.
In addition to that, previously, this office was not collecting reimbursement on DOC cases that we get from the Department of Corrections. We are able to do so, I believe it's to the tune of about four hundred fifty dollars per case. And so that could also generate a significant amount of revenue for the office, if we're able to do that. I mean, I know we get typically about, I was running the numbers on it. We've gotten as many as, in previous years, about a hundred-plus referrals on those cases. Now, obviously, not all of those are going to get filed. But you're still talking about dozens, if not more, DOC cases every year, where we can also get some additional revenue out of that, or reimbursement, that this office was not previously seeking or getting. So, other than that, I know that Miranda has her VAWA stuff here to present. I know it kind of presents a slightly tricky situation, so, because we might not know till January whether or not we actually get anything, but are you ready to go?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, and Locke's exactly correct. We are kind of putting the cart before the horse in this case because we don't know what the federal government is going to grant us, if anything. So what I can talk to you all today is why I think we need to request federal funding to support a full-time domestic violence prosecutor, and also tell you what I requested. Now, what I requested would be the best-case scenario. If they say yes, one hundred percent, here's what we're going to offer. So I'm more happy to talk to you about that. But just keep in mind that they can say, "Yes, one hundred percent, no, you don't get anything," or anywhere in between. So I do actually have the application that I sent in, and it does have the exact statistics on what I requested, if you all would like to see that copy right now. So, and I, I think if you all would like, we'll just talk about the numbers first. So what we requested is for the federal government to support a full-time domestic violence prosecutor. And why I say support is important, because with any, anytime you apply for federal grant money, there's always the catch. And the catch is, you cannot use federal funds to supplement, or supplant, sorry, you can't use them to supplant current local funds. So what that means is, I've applied for my salary to be funded in part by the federal government, but that would require us to bring on an additional prosecutor. So just talking statistics and money first, if you go to the, the last tab, the first tab covers the salary range, and that, this contract would be for two years. But the last tab is the total cost of the project. And so, the total amount that the local match, which would be Cole County, would be twenty-four to twenty-five percent, and that would be a little over thirty-seven thousand. That would be from the federal government for total benefits, that salary, that's health insurance, that's helping pay towards the retirement plan, would be over one hundred thousand dollars. Again, with the understanding that we would have to bring on an additional prosecuting attorney to take over the other duties, such as the burglary cases, the controlled substance cases, the conflict cases that I cover in Boone and other counties.
And that could be more of an entry-level position, from what Miranda and I have discussed. So, and I know I've kind of made mention before about eventually needing another APA, one way or the other, just because the caseload continues to increase. So I, I think this would be an excellent opportunity to get that done. Again, obviously contingent on what the federal government chooses to do here for us, but best-case scenario, I think it could be a great opportunity to basically get a two-for-one type of deal, so.
So they could, they could give us all, they could give us just a portion?
Or they could tell us.
No.
Exactly, exactly. And that, that's why I'm saying it's kind of the cart before the horse, because I, I can't tell you today what they will say. But I will tell you, as soon as I find out, I will let you all know. They send us a contract where they lay everything out. So you all should have that as soon as I do, and then obviously, I'll be back on the agenda to talk about it. That way, you all will know the contract as soon as I do.
We'd still have the twenty-five percent match, and then you're saying we would have to replace, replace you, but not necessarily replace you, we can rate entry level.
Correct.
So essentially, it's like a zero-dollar difference.
It's going to be...
That would be, that would be twenty-five percent.
No, the twenty-five percent could be offset by having an entry level instead of a...
This is her first year here too, so...
Well, but she came in as an APA too.
Oh, she did?
Yes, so, so Miranda's more of a bit of our...
A little bit of difference?
Yes. So by bringing in an entry level, there would be some offset there, yeah.
But we'd also have another attorney for that little bit of difference.
That's, that's correct. I mean, that, that's the hope, right? That's the hope of...
I'm kind of thinking, I'll make sure I'm following all this.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, so...
Hope's likely still gonna cost us something.
It, it, it will still cost us something.
Not as much as the additional staff would.
Correct.
We get another APA.
It would cost less than to just bring in a new APA.
Right, and that, that total number, that last tab there, that's, that includes the salary as well as the other benefits. So, yeah, if the seventy-five percent, you could cover an employee with everything, then yes, you're, you're correct. Kind of a good one, I think, though. But why, I think, I, I think it's really important that you have one prosecutor dedicated to domestic violence. And I could talk all day to you about prosecuting domestic violence, it's my passion. But domestic violence cases are unlike any other case because it's not a one-time deal, it's not a fight at the bar because of alcohol. It's combating learned behaviors by an abuser against his victim. And these individuals have relationships, they have history. No relationship ever started with a punch or a hit, otherwise, there wouldn't be a date too. And so it's that combating this long relationship using coercive tactics that require so much attention. Domestic violence cases are very labor-intensive, especially for the prosecutor. It's extremely important to build that relationship with the victim in order to surround her with community resources, such as racks, and ensure that we can empower and embolden her to get away from her abuser. So, in the prior administrations, they did not have one prosecutor dedicated to domestic violence. They had around six or seven. They also had a culture of putting responsibility on the victim to participate. They had what was called a one-drop policy. And that means if a victim came in and she wanted to drop a case against an abuser, they would say, "Okay, this is the one-time policy, and we'll do it." The issue, when you have so many prosecutors covering domestic violence, is in practice, it sounds like a good policy, one time, off you go. But in reality, it means that multiple cases were being dropped over and over and over again. And the issue is that emboldens your offender to continue to reoffend. And it doesn't keep our community safe, and it certainly doesn't keep our victims safe. So through this grant, it's to fund a full-time prosecutor dedicated to bringing justice to our community, as well as our victims. And that means adhering to what's called a no-drop policy. And again, in addition to the inherent nature of domestic violence, sticking to a no-drop policy also requires more work. It means when a victim comes in and she doesn't want to cooperate, I, I've just lost my star witness. Now I have to examine that case using evidence-based practices. That means, take away my victim, can I prove this case? Can I prove this case using what my officers do in the field? Can I use this case based on eyewitnesses, based on hearsay exceptions? So it adds in additional work that has to be conducted by the domestic violence prosecutor. And that work also requires, it starts from day one. It starts from when those officers walk into that scene. And so in addition to working the case... And so, in addition to, um, working the case and prosecuting the case, this grant will also allow us to train officers. And, um, part of the collaboration for this grant was with the Cole County Sheriff's Department. They wrote a letter of support, in support of us seeking this grant, in addition to supporting us help train local law enforcement officers, so we can use those evidence-based tactics from day one all the way to prosecution. Um, and I, I will tell you, for this grant, I spent hours, evenings, days going through statistics, and that for me is really where, um, the statistics kinda show the need. So, in the year of two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen, the office held, uh, over eight hundred victims of domestic assault. Um, on average, your caseload is around four hundred, right now mine is three hundred forty-four. Um, that's a lot, that's a lot in, in conjunction with how much work and how much time and attention these victims need, um, 'cause this abuser has maybe isolated her financially, has maybe isolated her from her friends, from her family, from her support group, um, you know, now the person who's bringing in the money to help feed her kids is in jail, uh, and she has motivations that we need to help her address. Motivations of, "I've gotta feed my kids, I gotta keep shelter over their head, what do I do?" Having a domestic violence prosecutor dedicated to combating these crimes and helping those victims improves her ability to get connections with resources like RACs. Also in addition to the Cole County Sheriff's Department, RACs also supported us in applying for this grant. Um, and I will tell you, looking towards the future, one of my hopes with this grant is establishing a community response team to combat domestic violence. Um, so that's a little bit about why I think we need this grant, assuming the federal government...
Keep your fingers crossed. Okay.
Do you want these back?
Uh, sure.
Yeah.
I actually will take one.
Let's, uh...
Thanks.
Yeah, I appreciate Locke that you're looking for...
Oh, yeah.
New sources of...
Miranda, we need one for the minutes as well.
Income and things like that, and we were a little bit stagnant for...
Yeah, and, and I think a lot of it is just, uh, you know, in some ways, not saying that anything was ever done intentionally or, or what, but maybe just getting, you know, some fresh eyes in there and, and looking at it in a new way and, and finding, you know, ways that other counties have been using to generate a little more revenue in the office, we've luckily been able to bring that, and so, uh, hopefully, um, we'll hear back from the federal government soon, and I guess otherwise we can, I know there was a lot of information, so if you guys wanna digest that, then we can tackle it again next week and just kinda, uh, see what questions, concerns you guys might have on it, that would be...
Tuesday is when you guys wanna do that?
Do you wanna add more sessions?
Well, we've already got, yeah, we've already got the VOCA grant set for discussion next week, so I figured we could just kinda tack this onto that if, if you guys want, or if...
Add a closed, yeah.
And then just close for, yeah.
So, just to give everybody kind of a heads up is, if we don't have, um, the information prior to when you approve the budget, um, most of the time that process will follow a court order process to get that grant put into, um, the budget, so...
Okay. All right. Thank you all very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Keep looking for money for that, uh, that high, high-performance...
No.
...emergency.
DA.
Yeah.
Thanks, Miranda.
Hey, thank you.
Thanks, Locke. Have a good day.
You too.
Joe, you ready?
Sure.
Joe's budget is on page fifty-seven.
You said you didn't have any changes, right, Joe?
Oh.
Not really.
Okay.
I do have a request if there is some other office space available, we're running out. We could use bigger quarters.
Is that, is that here downtown, or is that where?
Doesn't matter. It works better if we stay downtown because of my utilization of, uh, this building and the sheriff's department.
If I go one way or another by 2021, we will, we've had to do something, so...
Other than that, the budget's fine, the only one that I got iffy on is my travel. I've been trying to get my people closer to me, but their behavior is not suitable for some of the ones closer, so they're spreading out again, so that could change, but I still think I can work within the budget that I have.
So, Joe, um, you've had a open, full-time position most of the year. Um, I did not change your full-time positions, I've left that one full-time position in there, and I left your part-time at the same as well. I know that your budget numbers looked a little different than mine, did you have something else in mind that you were thinking to do there?
For the current stat that I have, yeah. That I mentioned probably late summer about bumping the salary of, uh, one of my staff to the level of, uh, a senior deputy position. And then, uh, I've got two people that...
Who's that?
Are reluctant to work part-time at the salary, so I'm still dealing with that. If not, then I would probably go back, and this would probably all be taken care of in January, utilizing a, a full-time position.
Do you guys have questions for Joe?
So, you were wanting to bring a couple people on at a higher salary for part-time?
Yes.
Do you have an hourly rate you were thinking?
I had mentioned earlier, last, late last summer, like twenty-five dollars an hour, but I don't think that's realistic across sometimes. Other county, a part-time employee, maybe eighteen dollars an hour.
Are we talking about a, like a thousand-hour employee, or...
Mm-hmm.
And you would have more than one, or just one?
Full-time, part-time.
Part-time.
Um, right now, it's probably gonna be one.
And so, would you fill the position that you have open, or...
Uh, full-time?
Yeah.
I will try to fill it, but I was thinking that, that money could be utilized to compensate if I got a deputy salary up to what I'm thinking, the person that is no longer here, she was making thirty-nine thousand.
I don't have that information. I can't, yeah. I can't get to it at the moment.
So, if you can kinda get us that, I mean, so currently you don't have a deputy?
I have a person that's, I think the classification is, uh, assistant.
No, it changed last year, so...
She is a deputy, thirty-two.
Right, so he has a deputy too at thirty-two, five, twenty, and then he has two, two administrative assistant positions.
Yeah, we talked about it, about chief deputy, and basically said last year you didn't need a chief deputy, you got your other deputies, right? If I remember correctly, so we didn't even have chief deputy in.
I didn't even have a deputy, so...
But now, you think we need a chief deputy?
Yes.
Any other questions?
So, he has an admin assistant open?
Yes.
Yeah, if you could just get us something in writing on what you'd like to propose, you know, your chief deputy ad, and, you know, if you wanted to, if you're not gonna fill your admin assistant, you're gonna use a couple part-time people, you know, we can take a look at that too, so...
Joe, if you can try to have that back here by like Monday or Tuesday, 'cause we're gonna talk about salaries next week?
Will do.
Okay.
I'm in town, I think. But, like I said, the only thing that I got question on is travel. I don't, I don't claim, when I'm in Cole County, I do that, I just charge whatever they pay me.
So, there's four thousand for mileage and a thousand for meetings, travels, and dues. Did you have an idea of what you were thinking you wanted that to be?
On my travel? Um, I, to give you a guess, I'd have to know where they're gonna be placed, I mean, there's a difference if they're in Columbia versus Trenton, or Tullacopy, Maryville, Springfield. I have one in the booty of my own, so...
So, right now, Joe, I think the projection's only that you're gonna be right at about three thousand, and there's four thousand dollars in there, but if you think you need more than that, you're gonna have to give me some idea of what that is.
I will.
Okay.
Well, there was a quarter, I didn't turn it in late, I didn't get reimbursed for it, so...
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, do you guys wanna flip to page sixty-five and look at Julie Cole's budget, 'cause she said she was not coming, but if we have questions, we could call and ask.
Is there any big changes in there? Not a lot there.
No.
Yeah, her budget was pretty much the same as last year's, and I didn't really make any changes to it, slight changes maybe.
Yep, slight. I don't have any questions on it.
Hmm.
Um, one thing to notice there is their jury script money, so in the past, they were getting reimbursed for, um, any, I think it's any of the trials that actually go to a jury for that time. Um, we haven't gotten anything the last two years really, so I've taken that revenue out of the budget instead of planning on it.
Okay.
Um, another one we should've looked at while Joe was here...
Is the revenue.
Yeah, his revenue, uh, I didn't bring it up.
If you go back to page fifty-seven, I can try to catch him.
Yeah, try to catch him, 'cause that one's pretty significant. So, when Marilyn was here, we were reaching revenues of ninety thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars a year in fees for his people. Um, the first year Joe was here, it kinda dropped off some, which we kind of expected 'cause Marilyn did a lot of cleanup of cases right before she left. Um, so it was only like sixty-six thousand. This year, so far, we've only collected thirty-three. Sorry, Joe, we, we forgot to talk about your revenue.
The fees?
Yes.
That's dependent on if there's money. I can't collect the fee if there's nothing.
Right, it just seems like it's dropped off significantly over the last two years.
Yeah, and most of my people don't have money. They should be picking up again because I've had several people that had real estate that we acquired, and so, so...
I guess it had been pretty steady for the last four, five years, now it's really dropped off.
Was it running about seventy-five, eighty?
We were...
Now it's at about thirty-five, forty?
Yeah, right now you're at thirty-three, eight, seventy-one.
And we filed a whole bunch of settlements.
Okay.
Questions?
Uh, just something we'll keep an eye on, see what we're doing different, maybe doing something wrong, or something slipping through the cracks.
Okay.
It's a significant change.
Yeah, we'll keep an eye on it and see, I'm, I mean, I'm sure that Marilyn's people didn't have money either, but somehow we got some kind of reimbursement.
So, I've, I've brought it up and it has picked up here in the last probably sixty days, 'cause my projection was only twenty thousand.
Yeah, we were only at sixteen when this book was printed.
Yeah, so, um, we may be able to adjust that up a little bit, 'cause I dropped it down to twenty-five thousand, but I'm a little concerned, 'cause that's a significant change in that revenue.
I knew how revenue goes. Doesn't increase that much anymore.
But I don't think we can continue to budget it at eighty-five either, because we're not, we're not seeing anywhere close to that.
Do we have a list of like, not names per se, but how many persons now that we are taking care of?
Yes.
She does.
So, where's our numbers compared to when Marilyn had it?
It's very similar as far as number of clients.
Okay, I thought maybe the numbers went down for some reason or another, and...
And I agree, he do, he does have multiple clients that don't, don't have any fees to take.
Go ahead.
So, we kinda want to open today, we can talk about other people's budgets, we can... Right, isn't that on there?
I think we did add budget discussion, so if you guys wanna, is there anything from today we wanna go back and talk about? Most of what we talked about, again, today was salary stuff, so, um, we made a few changes to EMS, but I made those while he was here. Um, he had two... So, he had two other changes, the medical supplies and the public relations that he brought up.
I don't think medical supplies will ever go down, so... It's...
I guess really, in, any changes to his budget at this point are gonna have to reduce the contingency or increase the transfer in to balance his budget back up.
What could we talk about?
EMS.
I hope I don't have a heart attack or something, 'cause he's not gonna come save me, but I'm not really for adding another person I know who really wants the logistics, but we've got some people who are that can, for now, take care of keeping track of medicines, and they're just gonna have to learn to do that. Supervisors do, have to step it up, but... Raising the other one, trying to bring that chart back up. Consider that chief of training, if that's indeed gonna be a number three person.
So, I do currently have the logistics person in there, but I don't have any other salary adjustments. Like I said, I put the three percent for the admin staff.
I, again, would rather take care of the people we have there than to add that position. If we're gonna do that, that's just where I'm at right now, that may change tomorrow, you know me.
And I guess the public relations, I haven't gotten a good list from him of what we're gonna spend that on. I know he has lots of ideas of classes he wants to do, but is that gonna be printing pamphlets and training education materials, is that buying equipment to teach the classes? What, what goes into that public relations line? So, any thoughts on those two? Like I said, we can leave salaries till later if you want.
I think we prob, I, I think really we do need a logistics officer. I think, you know, David, when, when he was logistics officer, he did, he did an awesome job, and, uh...
I think he did an awesome job, I just think it can be something that can be spread out among all of them to take care of and to keep an eye on, and it's probably not mad to have more than one person working on it and knowing what's going on, because if you have just one person and they leave, then nobody really knows what's going on, and you're starting round one again, so... Nobody really knows what's going on and you're starting round one again, so. So, what is it I gotta do soon? I don't know. Don't necessarily add that one at this point.
I don't know if you got people to step forward to do it.
Well, I mean, I, if they don't have to step forward, we can push them. That was part of the job. What was the other thing?
There was two, med, medical supplies, fifteen thousand more, and then a public relations line that was eight thousand. And then, of course, salary, other salary issues, but like I said, we can leave those till later if you want.
So, we're gonna look at all new positions and all salary adjustments all at one time?
I think so.
Can, can you put that all on?
Yeah, that's kinda thing, that's what we were about to do.
Yes.
So, anybody that wants a significant adjustment more than the three percent cola?
Yeah, so I have a list that I can type out here. I've been going through and double checking the ones they came in and asked for again.
I just wanted to clarify, but any, anything more than a three percent cola adjustment or merit or whatever you wanna call it, and then any new positions.
Kristen, have the time to get that together for next week.
I didn't get to ask him, I just hear him.
Thanks, thanks. Where's that bus? You want me to take a step?
In nineteen compared to eighteen?
For EMS?
Yeah.
I don't know, thought it was significant. He was telling me it was around ten thousand, eight thousand go through, or transferred through Jeff Central. Those are emergency calls, about eight thousand. Two thousand are direct calls that are, that are, um, just non-emergency transfers.
Okay, well, this is where the med supplies come in, is if, I understand if we have increased calls, increased volume of people we're taking care of and med supplies that we're using, that, that is what it is.
Well, I'm not sure that it's increased volume. I mean, it could be increased in costs, you know, raising their prices, you know, cost adjustments.
And he said call volume, so that's what I was there off of.
And it could be too, I don't.
They come out with new prescriptions and new prescri, you know, new medicines are always gonna be more expensive.
Then we should be billing them to ensure that it costs right. We give you a shot of something and it costs us one.
You would think it would work like that, but I'm not sure that it does. I think the base call is. I don't think you can bill for everything that you use.
Yeah, he was talking about that one time too, that is a mess, but it should, it should cover.
Should cover your costs, man. I always did that.
And I thought he just went through a bunch of the supplies and that's one of his arguments for being a logistics officer, is that it was a mess and so they cleared out a bunch of stuff and we had to replace it, so if everything's back up to par. So, I don't, I don't know if we do it at one eighty and keep an eye on it and see what happens, or do we up it now and then it's covered?
I'd, but if you don't use it, then it's, we s-
Okay, so we gotta take it away from somewhere, though. Same with the, the PR stuff. If, if one dude PR, we're not finding anything, someone either take it from education.
I'd give it as seven thousand for a paramedic scholarship. Just like that idea.
If you wanna do the scholarship, we can put it in there. You just gotta take it away from.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah.
So.
I think I have to have Jill research that.
Yeah, we were talking about that with the other, you know, where we, we get them licensed and get all this and then they, they immediately leave. So, that needs to be a county-wide policy that if we pay for their training, that they need to stay with us for three years or reimburse us for the training.
All right, I do wanna talk about the county commission's budget, but if the sheriff's got something first, we can wait, but I don't want you guys leaving.
So, what are we doing with the medical supplies and PR? I was just trying to get that answered.
Yep.
I thought those were low-hanging fruits, but.
They are, and you can finish though.
Low-hanging fruit, but I've been talking for ten minutes.
Well, we can, we can leave, take the, the PR and just, just talk to Matt more and may, maybe not put it in for right now. I think medical supplies, I have. Nothing gets cheaper. But the PR is, you know, it's not something that we necessarily have to have. Drugs is something we do have to have. It's kinda like giving, giving him bullets, you know, you know. You don't want him to have to have their, their one bullet in their shirt pocket.
That's, that's fine. But if, if we're going to increase it fifteen thousand, then it's gotta come from somewhere, so where do we wanna take it from? And I'll throw that back in his lap and say you can have, we can increase that, but it's gotta come from somewhere, or do we?
We're gonna ask him, yeah.
Do we leave it at one eighty and if it comes to it at the end of the year, we have to take it from contingency, we do it then. I mean, we got control of it, so.
So, what, I mean, so as you, as you're trying to digest this stuff, I'm just trying to understand your thought process here, so obviously Kristen created a proposed budget. And so, are you saying that her proposed budget is what you're going off of, or are you going off actual expenditures, or what are you looking at to say this is a number that, that each department has?
Both, all three. Um, I'll look at where we're at for this year, where we were at maybe in eighteen and why they're wanting to request more. If it's actual usage, that is what it is and, um, we can pull that from contingency. Now, the PR thing. See, that is something that you have to have here.
So, let's walk through that. So, last year, total activity, one eighty-one, eight twenty-seven. Year-to-date, right now, one seventy-eight twelve. But he just did a transfer, so I'm assuming he has additional bills out there to pay. But he has ten thousand dollars to spend between now and the end of the year to get him to the one eighty. Projected back in September was one eighty-two, six sixty-seven. And the additional fifteen would take him to one ninety-five.
So, you're looking at just expenditures, right?
Yep.
That one's not a hard break either way. I'm not gonna bite down until we go up to the one ninety-five. If we need to, if we truly feel that those are kind of increasing either cost or volume, or both, then just go one ninety-five and we take that out of contingency then, reduce to contingency, right?
So, we, we did start the year at one ninety-five? He's transferred some of that out to go other places?
So, we can't see nineteen budget. That's amended budget.
Uh, original's up on the screen. One ninety-five, one ten was original.
So, we brought it down for some reason.
He's transferred out to other places.
Okay. Well, I mean, if we're gonna have to do a transfer later on, we might as well put it in there now, but.
So, I mean, you can, so you can inflate any line item within that budget that you want, you know, thinking, oh, well, this, we may need this, or, I mean, we've heard that from almost everybody that comes in here. I'm, I'm not sure that's gonna be enough. Well, that's why contingency is built into, to the budget.
So, we put one eighty?
Well, so, I mean, obviously, you try to get people to work within, you know, a budget that's reasonable. Um, obviously, he's got costs that are associated, um, that we can look at, you know. His costs are gonna be around one eighty-two is projected for medical supplies, so, you know, here nor there, but you also, so also look back at revenues and, you know, our revenues are down. And supposedly, they're supposed to be going way up. Well, that's not happening either, or at least it hasn't happened yet. But I know there was a lot of stuff that they had to go back and hopefully this new billing company will be able to increase those revenues.
I hope.
All right, which floor is it?
Originally, he requested one eighty. We gave him one eighty, so we can, you can leave it at one eighty and then if it does go over. We take it out of contingency.
Good by me?
Okay, and then public relations?
What exactly is that? Can I ask?
Uh, it's more like outreach with schools and, um, you know, different events where you go out, you go out and engage the public in different things, um, like the, probably the naloxane thing where you're, you know. Talking to people about how to administer an overdose drug, or, you know, they got a child or somebody that's had issues with drug abuse, or, or you're just talking about stop the bleed in the schools for active shooter training and different things, or maybe, maybe that's not.
So, hiring people to do that, or supplies they need for that?
I don't, I don't know. I mean, eight thousand dollars, I don't think you're gonna hire somebody to do that, I think.
Well, I mean, to train the class or something.
I mean, if, if you have the equipment to teach the class, we're paying for the salary out of salary line, what, are you, like, is it supplies or?
You're asking the wrong person.
Yeah.
Or we can revisit that with Matt next week, one more.
Yeah.
I think it's gonna be specialized supplies to go out. I mean, it, it's actually a good idea to be able to.
Have some good giveaway.
Stuff to give away to, to, when you go to these outreach programs and stuff, so it's, it's not a bad idea.
That's what I didn't know, for sure. I don't wanna speak for him on it, so, I mean, I'm.
How much do you spend on like DARE and is it three?
Yeah, but it, I mean, we, we do it differently because sometimes I'll end up buying out of civil to make this ride and, and there's sometimes it will end up, uh, spending some other monies that we have, so. Uh, but it's a, it's a great idea to be able to come up with, you know, like the firefighters.
Stickers.
Drop and roll and.
Stickers.
And, yep. But if it's, you know, brings that good rapport to the public, I mean, it's not, it's not a bad thing at all.
Okay, if we can talk to him about it next week, see what he's got in mind on it.
Yeah.
Okay, what next?
Everybody wants to do, yeah.
Little John?
I just have a couple of things I was gonna bring up, uh, since I, when we left here with, um, Richard Lee. I went back and so. What's that?
Nothing.
So, you turned me off or?
No. Talking to Debbie.
Is there a switch?
There is a switch. It's a couple of baseball bat. Anyway, so, uh, went back and I think I'm gonna change my budget, uh, just on the capital improvements and add a thirty thousand dollar line item. Uh, because he is nowhere close to being able to go live yet with this cuz he's still gotta talk to OSC and stuff. But at least if I have it in my line item, cuz it's a one-time payment thing, I'm good with that. We can put it in my, in my capital improvements. If he doesn't, if it doesn't work out, then it just sits in my capital improvements and we don't have to worry about it. But that way, if it does, uh, if something does happen with OSC and they, uh, get sold, then they might be able to, be able to get us, uh, to let them hook into their, uh, their system and then we can move forward with it, so. Doing that, it's gonna, because I was gonna use my biometric money, but, and I talked to you guys about this once before about my jail van. I need to replace my jail van, uh, so I'm gonna use the biometric money for that. Um, and I, we talked, we talked about this like three months, four months ago or something. Um, and it's about, I mean, it's fifty thousand. It's all coming out of my biometrics and so it's in my budget and it's all state contract, so. Uh, I'd like to move forward with that, too. We talked about it and then we got to, when we were down there having a staff meeting, we got into a, a slight argument on, uh, if we actually said how much money it was gonna be. And I'm almost positive we said it was gonna be around fifty thousand for the insert, and this is a new van, uh, the insert in a new van, so I just thought I would come up and tell you, uh, if it's okay, I'd like to press forward this month and encumber that money out of my biometrics money and, uh, go ahead and get those to the, the van. Again, it's coming out of my budget right now, so it's not like I'm, uh, having to go back to you for money.
What, uh?
It's gonna replace a van that's got two hundred and fifty thousand miles on it, over two hundred and fifty thousand. It's, it's gave its life for guys.
Still running?
We don't take it on long trips anymore, but.
Gonna give that to Greg too? We just, we just keep.
We would do it, sell it. We'd get some money for it, but I don't know how much. It would be very much if we could get for it.
Engine problems, transmission?
We've had engine problems with it before. It's been fixed. It's still running. But like I said, we, we, what we don't need is, we don't need a van with six prisoners in it.
Right.
Roped down in Kierato, so.
Greg's, most of Greg's stuff is here in town, so.
It's in good shape, though.
No, it's not in bad shape. I mean, it's, it's.
It, it's showing its age. I see it, I see it, I see it coming and going.
It's, it's, it's pretty good. It rattles more than it rolls, I think, but.
What year is it?
Uh, I, I couldn't tell you that.
You can tell us, go ahead. Are you scared?
Older than two thousand?
Uh, no, no, it's not.
It's in good shape then.
Yeah.
What you guys are talking about.
Well, as far as rattles, is that, if, you know, Greg wants something to haul equipment and stuff in, it, it doesn't really.
I, I don't know if he would want this van. I, I would not recommend it. I, I would, uh, for the simple reason to do that, you're gonna have to pay someone to take.
Take everything out.
Wheeler uses it for his car, then.
Well, he got his from, from Richardson.
I got Richardson's a little bit.
He got, yeah.
I just spent eight hundred bucks for shots on it yesterday. But anyway, uh, if it's okay with you, we're gonna press forward with that van and go ahead and get it on order. It's gonna be, it'll be a month or two months before we get it in, but.
What kind of van is it? New or?
Chevy, yeah, a new, it's off state contract, a new Chevy cargo van with the, has the rear air in it.
And so, you got money in biometrics that you're gonna buy that with?
Yes. I have ninety-eight thousand in there right now.
And so, what, what's it gonna cost to outfit it?
Uh, it's, well, right now, the vehicle is like twenty-one. This isn't gonna be a good number cuz it's not an extended cab, but the, the state number is twenty-one, uh, about twenty-one thousand if you add all the, uh, cuz we're gonna get the bigger engine. Uh, it's gonna roughly, right now, it's forty thousand, eight hundred is what it's, the, the insert, off state contract, and then the van itself. But then we're still gonna have to pay for it to get outfitted or to get, uh, installed, and that's not gonna be cheap cuz it's twenty-five hundred dollars for a car, so you're probably, for this van, you're costing probably four thousand or five. Um, and then we gotta get a video system in it, so it's gonna be another, probably another fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars for that.
So, the van's forty?
The van is twenty-one.
With the insert, it's forty?
With the insert, I'm sorry. With the insert, it's forty-four, five.
The insert is what?
It's like a cage.
Mm-hmm. It's a pill.
Damn cage is more than the damn van.
Yeah, they're not cheap. Fifteen, five is how much it is.
It's more than that.
No.
You said the total cost was forty-four, five, and the van was twenty-one, so.
Well, it's twenty-one before you add the, the extras, so it comes with no, no rear air and, you know, stuff like that. We want the bigger engine, um, that kinda stuff.
You just have one van?
No, this'll be our second one. We have two vans and a car.
You guys say? Good?
I'm good. I, I, I see him coming and going. I mean, it's, it's, uh.
I'll work on this. I'm hoping to be able to, to hopefully encumber the money tomorrow, so, uh, I've already got the bid for the insert. I just gotta call the company because it's, um, the bid isn't, isn't what I wanted because it's a, it's a normal express van and it needs to be extended. So, it's gonna be a little bit more than twenty-one based, right? because it's a, it's a normal express van and it needs to be extended, so it's gonna be a little bit more than twenty-one based price, but it's not gonna go over fifty thousand.
So there's no value on the old insert?
Uh, no. No, it'd cost us more to take it out, repair it, and put it back in, and it would be, we'd worth it. And the last guy's, the last guy's installed it almost. It's been on your shoe. I guess it's a real pain to put together, so. All right, that's it for me, but like I said, you'll see your capital improvements is gonna change. We're gonna put that thirty thousand on our capital improvements for that program.
We're okay.
Thank you.
I don't care what they say about it.
When I walk out of there, it's on, it's on tape, yeah. See, I'll learn.
Mute.
Mute.
Hey, can we look at this emergency services sales tax real quick? I was just trying to follow the numbers just on the sales tax side. But obviously, you had the six ninety in there for amelances, and you had the one seventy-nine in there for capital improvements. So as I look at the sheet, are you-
You have to add that capital lease line. So the capital lease is his striker cop payment.
Capital lease, where, oh, okay.
So those two together is his capital list.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
So that's part of the striker. Big portion of that is the striker payment?
Right.
Or almost all of it? Is there, is there something else in there? I mean, is there another four thousand in the capital lease that's, makes the one twenty-two-six versus the one eighteen, or?
It's one twenty-two-six. That's his payment. I don't know what the one eighteen's.
So you see the one eighteen-five over on the capital side?
Yeah, that's what's his, but-
I think that may have been his number in his request, but the actual payment's one twenty-two-six.
Okay, so maybe we can change that on the other side, too, on his capital request.
Oh, yeah. And one other change in there, and I went ahead and made it, because we have to, but we did not have advanced notice of the Saint Mary's TIF and got that bill this year, and I did not include that TIF in the sales taxes. So in that tax increment, financing line is where we pay that TIF money back. So I had dropped that because the three TIFs we had were running under our expectations, but I had to bump it back up to the fifteen to cover that Saint Mary's TIF.
And we are kinda in limbo as to what that's going to, going forward.
Yeah, so that, that TIF's gonna continue to grow. As they add additional businesses on that property, it's, it's going to continue to grow. Because right now, the only business that's on there that was reporting sales tax this year was the coffee place.
Okay.
But once the Burger King opens, that will add to it, and since their original tax base was zero, they get half of all the sales tax that they collect back.
Half of all the sales tax, or just the local sales tax?
Well, our portion, so yes, half of our portion.
I mean, they still gotta pay the state there.
Right. I don't think the state, yeah, but like the city's portion, they get half of it from the city back. They get half of the county's portion of the sales tax back.
So that TIF encompassed across the expressway into the Starbucks and Burger King, and what else?
The hotel, whatever's coming.
The hotel on the other side, so when it opens.
I'm looking at some retail.
Outlots on that side of Missouri Boulevard that they'll develop then as well, I assume.
I assume.
Yeah, we definitely get in on that.
So, right now, our guess, like, right now, we broke down the first one and it was about, what, twenty-three? Two thousand per sales tax, but that was, again, just for the Starbucks. So, we're taking a guess that maybe six next year, but that could be way less than what it actually turns out to be.
Were they just having a public comment on that? I don't know.
No, that one, let's see.
I don't think they ever gathered the committee together to, to discuss that, but I'm sort of sitting to do it.
Oh, I think we did that way. I think that's been quite a while ago.
It was quite a while ago.
And see, the thing was, at the time, Saint Mary's was not-for-profit. They weren't paying any tax, so.
So their tax base was zero?
Yeah, their tax base was zero. So we, we are getting some tax.
It's the real estate part of it?
Pardon?
The real estate part of that, right, versus what it was, well, I guess they were paying real estate to, singers.
Right, but this is just a sales tax.
They, they were paying tax, yeah. After, after they built a new hospital, then I think they had to pay, they had to pay tax on the old hospital, I think.
So the TIF is just on fifty percent of the sales tax they still have to pay, real and personal?
Well, they get a portion of it, too, so there's seats and eats or whatever it is. So there's a sales tax portion of a TIF, and then there's also a property tax portion of the TIF. Property tax portion will run through Larry and it will come off the top before it comes to us. On the sales tax side, we get all the sales tax and then, once a year, they calculate what that portion is and we have to pay it back to the developer.
How long does that go?
Yeah, I don't have paperwork in front of me. I don't have paperwork in front of me.
That's fine, I was just curious if you knew right off.
I don't know off the top of my head.
That's been a while.
I don't see them less, less than ten.
But we still are collecting some tax where before we weren't collecting any tax on it.
Right, it's just hard to see.
I know, yeah, it's, it's, it's-
Yeah, it's, it's hard to see that increase when it comes as our regular distribution, because you can't say, oh, well, this is the amount of tax that's coming from here we weren't getting before.
Right, and some businesses close, some, you know, that could change the overall. And since sales tax has been pretty flat, we're anticipating flat, so.
What they do on that lodging tax? City's lodging tax? I don't know. I mean, that's when you build a hotel.
So that's one other change I made while we were in here, because I'm gonna have to go through all the sales taxes and change that back. And like I said, the fifteen thousand is just an estimate of what those four TIFs will cost us.
And if you guys can just turn to thirty-seven, there's not much on that budget.
So fif- fifteen thousand is a total amount overall?
That's all four TIFs, so we have O'Donoghue's south side.
It's all three sales taxes, too, right?
Right, yes, so it gets divided, yes, across all three.
And I could-
What page, I'm sorry? What page are we going to?
Um, thirty-seven. Again, you don't see much there. I mean, we don't obviously bring in any revenue, but there are some expenses there. And you were talking about the other day how much was in our meetings and travel. All three of you and anybody else that we decide to go on any kind of training, there's two thousand in there. We also have another two thousand and one twenty-seven I use for when you guys go to meetings that affect more than just your commission job. Okay, so we talked about that. There's just a couple of things I wanted to bring up as far as, you know, as you know, since the budget's put out, I may have somebody gone for three months this next year. I may be coming to you asking for a part-time person. That is not in the budget currently. It's, it's become increasingly more activity within our department when we have six to eight turnovers every two weeks. It's a lot of employees that come and go. It's a lot of websites that we have to maintain. And we, eh, we added another website this year, which is surfdeferredcom. Now, we have to go on to their website and add people in there, take people off, and I have to upload the direct deposits to them, our sheet to them, a report to them. We also are gonna add in two thousand and twenty, election workers that are gonna flow through the payroll system. Yes, we flowed them through the accounts payable before, but putting them into the payroll system is going to take manpower to get all that in and then to pay them, what do you say, five elections next year, in the middle of all our payrolls that come every two weeks. So, I just want you to know, I'm definitely going to probably ask you for part-time. It's gonna be the summer months, May through July. Also wanna put a word in for our employees. We seem to be an example here, and we seem to be forgotten some, because we are trying to set an example for other departments. So I'd like you to keep that in mind. The girls work very hard, they make you guys look good, make the county look good, and they are dedicated to this place, so I don't want them to get lost and I wanna speak for them that, you know, you guys consider whatever we're gonna do with salaries next week. I know we're all county employees, and I know we have different facets of different jobs that we do. Some things, you know, sheriff, EMS, help, but we can't forget about the other people that make things run. And without, without them, everything wouldn't run, you know, so. And, and we are, I'm working more with the HR consultant people. We're kinda behind the scenes. I really appreciate that. I appreciate being able to call somebody, text somebody. When I, people bring questions to me, it's, I don't, you guys don't see it, and I'm probably not keeping you abreast of all of that, but I am using them. We haven't, you know, we had to pay a deposit on that, so I haven't received any invoice. But it's very short questions. I'm not sure how she's gonna bill, but I see that taking a lot more time. But it, it is a help to have that, so. And, and where we go with that?
How much you thinking for part-time?
I was thinking, yeah, I was thinking, you know, seventeen, eighteen dollars an hour, and so I stay about four, four or five thousand.
Okay.
And the HR people have been pretty responsive.
They have. No, I mean, they're not instant, but, you know, by the next day, I have usually an answer from somebody. And they're very good to work with. We've, I've only had one meeting on the manual and it's coming to you soon, so. But, um, after the budget, yeah. She's, we'll get this done at the end of the year. I said, well, you're not gonna get this done by the end of the year.
No.
So.
So you made one comment about meetings, travels and dues, and so some of that, you said some of our travel and stuff comes out of the commission portion and some comes out of one twenty-seven?
Yes.
So if you're paying for your annual training-
Okay.
That you're required to go to as the commissioner, or you're going to a meeting that you're on a board as the commissioner, then it comes out of the commission's budget?
Okay.
If you're going to something where you're representing the county and not something required of your job, it gets paid out of one twenty-seven.
And again, so there's two thousand in there, too.
Be an example of that.
So like you could say the MAC meeting-
Yes.
You know, you're going to represent Cole County. You're not necessarily going-
As your training.
As your training.
Okay, I'm just curious.
And then a Jill goes to continuing to add or something like that. I take out a one twenty-two or one twenty, I actually take out a-
One twenty-seven.
Barely. It's about naptime. Or lunchtime, uh, either one.
Do you wanna look at one twenty-seven while we're talking about it? Page forty-six is where it starts. That's revenue. The next two pages is, or next page is expense.
And hopefully, we bring to you the liability insurance and the vehicle next week, but I haven't heard confirmation on that yet.
Need to run through the revenue side here?
It, it does run through, like, the big expense here on page forty-six, I'm saying forty-seven. And then I do bill the departments I can bill for vehicles and for liability and stuff, too, so. It's a big dollar amount in our budget here.
So financial institution tax at five thousand, what's that?
That's money we receive from, it's statutorily, I don't know.
Yeah, so we get a distribution in January and December of every year. January is always the interest earned on it and December is, so it comes from the state. I can't give you a good description of what it is.
Most of it comes in and goes back out.
So it's a tax that, like, banks pay?
Yeah. I've got the definition for it.
Yeah.
Uh, stock insurance.
So that's insurance company, the tax that they, yeah.
In this county, and the state sends us that money.
Insurance company in this county that sells insurance or whatever pays into that.
It's based on the premiums that are paid. I can get you a definition of that, too.
I was just curious.
And it's a one-time payment?
Yes.
So it comes once a year?
And then a public defender grant? Is that something coming from the state for their?
I bill the two entities that, we service three, Cole County, Montauk County, and-
Miller.
Miller.
So there's, oh, it's not up there, but yeah, it's based on square footage?
Of the building.
Of the building and-
And population.
Minimal amount?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And two hundred hogs and rent for over here, they have a hundred and fifty like that.
It's, it's about five thousand for Miller and it's about three thousand for Montauk.
And then, uh, health insurance, forty-five thousand?
That's retirees' health insurance, where they pay, yeah, they pay back for their-
For their portion, okay. Admin fee reimbursement.
So that's the adminis-
Administration fees on everybody's-
Yep, yep.
For computer services and stuff?
No, computer services goes into Brian's budget, so admin fees, like, the flat three percent. Yeah, payroll, Jill, auditor, yeah.
All together, okay. I have any other questions, or should I ask? What is that, professional services encompass, or contractual services?
So here's a list. Some smaller one-time fees that we pay, so like Jill has Westlaw fees. We pay a hosting fee for the website. We pay the collector for surtax payback, our agreement with that surtax issue. Bar dues, our annual financial reporting that we do on the GL cops, that's the WM financial annual fee. If we have legal fees, that one's kind of a guess. It's kind of a cushion in case we need to hire out an attorney for something in particular. And then that more source contract.
HR contract. Is there a reason, as I just looked at this, why the MAC and the RPC or down at materials and supplies, or just because it's always been there?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Should be more of a contractual service.
That one was prior to me, yes. That account was there prior to me.
That's before all that gas was there.
I think postage would be going down, but a bunch of email and stuff, I guess, people are still required to send stuff.
The majority of that comes from courts.
Courts.
And collector, so a lot of time, yeah.
Some of that doesn't, I mean, he pays for the initial to go out through. Is that round printing or whatever, or central bank, I don't know.
Right, but when they do their big delinquent one and stuff.
And they've been approaching me several times about new machines and different stuff like that.
Posted machines?
Yeah. That one isn't that old, though.
Questions?
Any other budgets you wanna look at, or are we right at it? We're right at twelve, so.
Wanna stop for today, take a break, come Monday and-
Yep.
All right, I bet you do.
Back here Monday?
Back here Monday. Did we change it to eight or eight-thirty, or we started not?
We changed it all to eight.
Eight o'clock.
Eight.
Monday, Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And we do keep adding stuff to Tuesdays. I don't know, somebody had mentioned- And we do keep adding stuff to Tuesdays. I don't know. Somebody had mentioned limited agenda, but we just added several more things this morning.
Yeah, most of those are gonna be pretty quick.
Yeah.
I thought we were stopping. She even asked about putting some kind of bid award on there and I think we're trying to limit that agenda, so...
I mean, that's the only time you're meeting.
If anybody else has, I'm gonna tell them and make it wait till the seventeenth if they can.
Yeah.
So we can pile through this stuff. Or we're gonna be here all day. What odds you put on there?
Just a closed session that, like, locked in.
Oh, well, that's a budget anyway, so, okay.
Hopefully they, people that wanna come talk about personnel, I mean, need to have it all in writing so that we can look at it and make decisions, because I don't need people to sit in here for fifteen minutes and beat around the bush about different stuff.
The length of their plea is directly related to...
Well, so, so you did hear most of the salary requests in these budget things. I'm gonna type you up a list by department of what those are.
Thank you, thank you.
Sorry, Chris.
Jeff wants a raise, too. Could you quit doing that?
Oh, sorry.
Think I'd be trained that with you.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine if they wanna come back in and make their plea, but it needs to be, they need to be sixty words or less and they need to get it out and spill their beans and, okay, fine, thank you, see ya, you're gone.
Yeah.
Well, so I, I don't wanna get into a whole nother day of sitting and listening because most of them had the opportunity to come in and plead their case during this part of it. If you want to have discussions about each one and they want to be involved, I think that's fine, but a presentation again on what you're wanting, I think is repetitive of what we've already been through. I, I definitely think if they want to be here that day and answer any additional questions or make any short comments, yes, but I don't wanna sit through another lengthy discussion about each individual one.
I agree.
We're gonna talk about individual positions in closed session. And if no people are, we're talking about positions.
If you start talking about naming names, I don't even know if that's closed. It's public information.
I was gonna say, most, their current salary, salary is public information unless you're talking about some sort of merit increase or their performance, I think that would be closed.
What about somebody that wants an additional pay for, you know, take Holly, for instance, for additional duties or whatever? I have no idea what that looks like, so...
I, I think that would be open. I mean, her current salary is public information.
We don't have to have named names. You can just talk position anyway, because if the physician is taking on additional responsibilities and duties, then that's the way I think it'd be addressed. If you wanna name names, that's fine.
I mean, I think there are a few that are individuals that we will be talking about their positions. Most of them are titles.
And you have closed session, so either way, you can get it done next week, Tuesday. Will we add it to Monday too?
I think Monday we probably should clean up, so we, we haven't talked about health insurance fund. We haven't talked about your sales tax a whole lot. And I think just kind of flipping through and making sure any changes we have made we're still good with, so we can look at bottom line.
Okay.
Because we only go till noon on Monday, right?
Yep.
Yep.
But we're definitely gonna have to make some decisions. You want me to get line back in here?
I'm hoping we recess till fourth or...
Second.
All the papers.
Alright.
It may not...
Here, Chris.
It may not be till Monday morning. Okay.
Okay, so I'll record it.
Okay, we'll be opening bids for twenty nineteen dash three-three tires and miscellaneous services. Are we online? Okay. The first one is from Warehouse Tire Jefferson City. Everything appears to be correct. Next is from Pomp's Tire Service Incorporated of Jefferson City. It appears to be complete. The last is from Goodyear. Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company. This is from out of Boonville, Missouri. And it appears to be correct and filled out. Okay, these bids will be taken under advisement, uh, and brought back forth before the conclusion at later date.